Good evening. Good evening. This is Chairwoman Julie Hen. I now call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of Baltimore County for Tuesday, January 11th, 2022. I invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, to be led by Mr. Christian Thomas. We will then have a moment of silence in recognition of those who have served education in Baltimore County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's Board of Education meeting is being held in person and virtually and broadcast online through Microsoft Teams and through BCPSTV, Comcast Xfinity Channel 73, Verizon FiOS Channel 34. In order to efficiently conduct this meeting, all voting items this evening will be done by roll call vote. The first item on the agenda is consideration of the January 11th Agenda. Dr. Williams, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda?
There are none.
Hearing none, the agenda stands as presented.
Ms. Row-- excuse me, Ms. Hen, Chairwoman Hen?
Yes, Ms. Scott?
Yes, I had a question. I wanted to know if it would be appropriate to add to the agenda a discussion as far as virtual learning goes and the health metrics and testing.
If you would like to make a motion, go ahead, Ms. Scott.
Yes, I move that virtual discussion or an update on virtual learning and health metrics and testing be added to the January 11th Agenda after item K.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And who made the second?
Ms. Joz.
Thank you, Ms. Joz. Any discussion?
Yes, may I please speak to my motion?
Sure. And then Dr. Hager. Go ahead, Ms. Scott.
Thank you so much. I feel that I have been hearing from lots of parents, staff, and the community that there has been deafening silence from the board as far as their concerns, and there is a lot of confusion out there. And I feel that it is incumbent upon us as a board who represents our students, staff, our community, to ask these questions and to get answers so that we are fully clear and that we are able to articulate clearly and there is a very clear understanding. So that is why I made the motion, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Dr. Hager?
I just wanted to mention that I know that Dr. Williams is going to address this in his report. Well, I see that there are a few slides on this, but could you just let us know? Are you planning to address these issues in your report this evening?
That is correct. I do have slides and an update, part of my superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Dr. Hager. And, Dr. Williams, then, if you could elaborate on that, would you consider this motion, then, redundant based on what you plan to present in your superintendent's report and slides? And will there be opportunity for board member questions following that presentation?
So I do have an update, usually a report. There are no discussions or questions. So as the superintendent gives his report, the chair gives her report, and the student member, there's usually no questions or discussions afterwards.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Mack? And then, and then Ms-- okay, thank you. Ms. Joz?
Thank you, Ms. Hen. Dr. Williams, so you just said that there will be no discussion or no time for us to ask any questions. As a, you know, our first and foremost priority as a board should be the safety of all of our students, teachers, staff. And we've got numerous emails. My concern is that we do not have a clear understanding of the metrics. These are extraordinary circumstances. So I think a 10-minute Q and A to answer and assuage some of the parents. And I'm a parent, BCPS parent as well, and I do have some questions as a parent, as a board member. And I'm pretty sure you have the answers because you-- it is in place. Schools are opening tomorrow. So I really think this agenda item should be added because it is, first and foremost, in everybody's mind today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joz. Ms. Scott, would you mind restating the motion, please? Ms. Scott?
Apologies. Sorry, I was on mute.
Thank you. No worries.
Sorry, I'll start over again. I said I move that discussion on virtual learning and health metrics and testing be added to the agenda after item K.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion, board members? Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. I would just like to state that I also feel that this is a topic that needs-- that does warrant a conversation from the board and that we should be involved in a conversation with the superintendent and staff about the COVID-19 metrics and about some of the current practices that are in place. Thank you. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. I would like to offer an amendment to Ms. Scott's motion, if I may, to move-- I support this motion. I would like to offer the following amendment to move this agenda item following item G so that discussion can follow the superintendent's report as it seems to fit with the presentation that Dr. Williams plans to offer as item G.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Row. Any discussion?
I just want to make a comment, Chair.
Yes, Dr. Williams?
So when the question was asked about discussion, what I answered was what typically happens with a superintendent's report. That by no means indicated that I did not want to discuss or have a further conversation with the board. So the question was about the report. So I just want the notes to clarify that I am not against having a conversation with the board regarding this important topic.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Ms. Scott, would you be amenable, should we include discussion following Dr. Williams' report? Is that something you would consider withdrawing your motion? Should we modify the agenda to include discussion following Dr. Williams' report?
No, I still would like it to be an agenda item.
Fair enough. Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to amend to include your agenda item as offered following item G1, which is the superintendent's report. If there's no further discussion, we can call for a vote. Mrs. Causey, did you have a comment or question on the motion to amend?
I was going to say I support it, and I call the question.
Thank you. So we now have to call the question requires a two-thirds. Is that correct, Mr. Mercedes? Thank you. Ms. Gover, would you please call a roll call vote on Ms. Causey's calling the question?
On the amendment.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Row?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joz?
Yes.
Ms. Pasture?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman? Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn? Mr. Kuhn? Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the motion to call the question carries. Now we will vote on the motion to amend the motion. Ms. Gover, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Can I just get clarification? Is it going to be item G2 or item-- the new item H?
It would be G2.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Row?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joz?
Yes.
Ms. Pasture?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn? Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that motion carries. We will now vote on the motion as amended. Ms. Gover, may I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Row?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joz?
Yes.
Ms. Pasture?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn? Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Okay. The revised agenda is approved, and the agenda stands as presented. Earlier this evening, the board met in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act for the following reasons: to, one, discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals; seven, consult with counsel to obtain legal advice; and eight, consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. The minutes of the closed session and information summary can be found on board docs under this board meeting agenda date. The next item on the agenda is Personnel Matters, and for that I call on Ms. Anderson. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Hen, Vice Chairwoman Pasture, Superintendent Williams, and members of the board. I would like the board's consent for the following Personnel Matters: retirements, resignations, deceased recognition of service, and certificated appointments.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Matters as presented in Exhibits D1 through D4?
So moved, Mack.
Thank you, Ms. Mack. Do I have a second?
Second, Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Row?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joz?
Yes.
Ms. Pasture?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn? Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Administrative Appointments, and for that I call on Dr. Williams.
Good evening, members of the board. I am bringing forward the following administrative appointments for your approval: Chief Information Officer in the Office of the Superintendent; Chief Financial Officer in the Office of the Superintendent; Manager of Staffing in the Office of Staffing; and Specialist Disciplinary Literacy in the Office of English Language Arts.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative appointments as presented in Exhibit E1?
So moved, Row.
Thank you, Ms. Row. Do I have a second?
Second, Causey.
Thank you, Mrs. Causey. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Row?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joz?
Yes.
Ms. Pasture?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn? Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Williams?
Sure, thank you. Our first appointment is Pedro Augusto as the Chief Information Officer. Welcome to BCPS. He brings to us experience as a Chief Information Officer in the DC Department of Consumer Regulatory Affairs. He has had previous experiences as a government contractor, director of client services, program manager, and assistant vice president, systems manager. Also, he has served as the Senior System Integrity Analyst for Sally Mack for six years. Congratulations, Pedro Augusto. Our next appointment is Rachel Gosovich as the Specialist in the Disciplinary-- Specialist of Disciplinary Literacy in the Office of English Language Arts. She brings to us 14.4 years of experience in Baltimore County. Currently, she was serving as a resource teacher in the Office of English Language Arts. She served as a resource teacher in the Department of Academics, as well as an English teacher at Delaney High and Dundalk High School. Congratulations, Rachel Gosovich. Our next appointment is Christopher Hart Love as the Chief Financial Officer. Welcome to Baltimore County Public Schools. He's currently the Chief Financial Officer at Carroll County Public Schools, where he's served at for over 13 years. He's also served as the Director of Budget and Resource Analysis, Supervisor of Budget, and the Assistant Director of Budget and Fiscal Analysis at the University of Maryland College Park. Congratulations, Christopher Hart Love. Our last candidate is Bradley J. Kawujin as the Manager of Staffing in the Office of Staffing. He brings to us four years in Baltimore County. Currently, he's the HR Officer in Staffing. He's served as the HR Analyst in Staffing and previous experience at IKEA SSC in Baltimore. Congratulations, Bradley Kawujin.
Congratulations to all, and welcome. Thank you, Dr. Williams. Our next item is Public Comment. This is one of the opportunities the board provides to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. The members of the board appreciate hearing from interested citizens. As appropriate, we will refer your concerns to the superintendent for follow-up by his staff. The Board of Education will conduct the public comment portion of the meeting by allowing those who register to speak to attend in person. Registration was open to the public one week prior to tonight's board meeting and was closed at 3:00 PM yesterday for anyone wishing to speak at this evening's meeting. Board practice limits to 10 the number of speakers at a regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers are selected randomly using an electronic selection process from all registrations received within the designated timeframe. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Of course, if fewer than 10 registrations are received, all who registered will be permitted to speak. However, no speaker substitutions will be allowed. While we encourage public input on policy, programs, and practices within the purview of this board in this school system, this is not the proper forum to address specific student or employee matters or to comment on matters that do not relate to public education in Baltimore County. We encourage everyone to utilize existing dispute resolution processes as appropriate. I remind everyone that inappropriate personal remarks or other behavior that disrupts or interferes with the conduct of this meeting are out of order. I ask speakers to observe the three-minute clock, which will let you know when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks when you hear the tone or see that time has expired. The microphone will be turned off at the end of your time, and it could be turned off if a speaker addresses specific student or employee matters or is commenting on matters not related to public education in Baltimore County. If not selected, the public may submit their comments to the board members via email at boe@bcps.org. More information is provided on the board's website at bcps.org under Board of Education, Participation by the Public. I now call on our advisory and stakeholder group leaders to speak. Our first speaker is Maya Durkovic of the Baltimore County Student Council.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. It's wonderful to see everyone. My name is Maya Durkovic, and I'm the Chief of Staff of the Baltimore County Student Councils. Tonight, I'll be sharing BCSE's report, co-authored by myself and BCSE President Samantha Warfel. To start, our January Executive Board meeting took place on the 5th, wherein the BCSE Executive Board discussed our upcoming school safety series and other BCSE initiatives in the coming months. BCSE and the Baltimore County Junior Councils, our middle school group, also sponsored a meeting allowing our respective executive boards to have a conversation with County Executive Johnny O and Superintendent Dr. Williams. Students were eager to discuss my I pass with their local leaders as well as bring into focus their personal concerns around the pressing issues of BCPS's response to current-- to the current COVID situation and other school safety concerns. Additionally, our school safety series has advanced in the planning process and will feature topics including the different facets of school safety, including mental health, physical safety, personal safety, and public safety; implicit bias and its safety implications; collaboration with the Maryland Center for School Safety; and student responsibility and vision and reinventing and taking ownership of the saying, "See something, say something." We look forward to further updating you on our progress with this important initiative. We are also excited to begin this MOP selection process with the first round of application screening being underway starting tomorrow. We are eager to involve more student voices than ever before in this process. We are also looking forward to doing all that we can to bolster student voter turnout for this MOP selection in March, including updating our guidelines for MOP campaigning on social media. Importantly, we steadfastly support upcoming legislative initiatives spearheaded by our current MOP, Christian Thomas, that aim to achieve full voting rights for the student member. We plan to use our position as provided by state law to preside over the MOP selection process as well as promoting student education and involvement with the position to encourage the legal acceptance of unrestricted voting rights for our student board member. Lastly, regarding the concerning current COVID safety issues, BCSE stands with students in a time of vast uncertainty surrounding safety protocols while preserving a strong instructional program for all BCPS students, along with strongly considering the mental and physical health of both students and staff in this decision-making. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Billy Burke with CASE. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairwoman Mrs. Hen, Vice Chairwoman Mrs. Pasture, Superintendent Dr. Williams, and members of the board. I'd like to speak to you tonight on three subjects. The first is the budget. CASE fully supports the proposed budget that Dr. Williams is bringing forward this evening. I know you have heard from your constituents about behavior and that Dr. Williams has held community meetings asking for support and solutions. My members have been discussing what behavior support would look like in a school. I've heard the support's called many things, from dean of student behavior to safety team leader. It doesn't matter what we call them. Schools need supports to work with students during behavior and discipline interactions. Administrators have been handed many new responsibilities during the pandemic. SROs support in a very specialized situation. Schools are mindful of the disproportionality of discipline for students receiving special education services and our Black and Brown students. Discipline is intended to change behavior through new learning. Administrators need support in order to do this. Please fund positions designed to provide the support. In addition, please support the Restorative Practices Contract coming before you tonight. The second subject is when schools need to move to virtual instruction. All of us, the five unions and the school system, want students to learn in person. COVID is not the reason we are sometimes moving to virtual instruction. The staffing shortages, in addition to the absences created by COVID, sometimes make it unsafe for students to learn in person. It's a matter of safety. Not many decisions are that black and white during this pandemic, but this one is. It is a matter of safety. The third subject is the unrealistic workload and hours for CASE members. We often think about school administrators when we think of CASE, but I need to acknowledge the central office members in CASE. They have been deployed to schools to support. They know that this is the right thing to do. They have been told not to worry about their office jobs while they are supporting schools, but they can't do that. They are professionals. They manage grants. They supervise employees not deployed to schools, and they have active projects operating in schools. And so they will work two jobs. They will work two jobs at the expense of their health and time with their families. We've been operating in crisis mode for two years. It is not sustainable. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bosch Farone with the Central Area Education Advisory Council. Good evening.
Good evening to all. The Central Area Council teamed up with Northwest and Southwest Advisory Councils yesterday. Thirty-two persons attended our combined meeting. Ms. Han was the presenter, and she has done a great job. Special thanks to Marlena Colleton, Chair of Southwest, and also Clinton Collins, Chair of Northwest, for their organizing and thoughts. Two common threads came from the meeting. The public wants more communication from BCPS, and also, we want to address our state representatives for more funding, for building, and maintaining our schools. My team, Central, met in work session last Wednesday. The team likes to sell you the idea of foreign exchange program and adopting teaching multiple foreign second languages from elementary school up. Why? A second language is about culture. It does open the eyes because reading and living other cultures makes us less likely to discriminate and misunderstand other ethnicities. It does make the students more mature, more rounded, more ready to tackle the future. One member put it in this way: If effectively competing with others not good enough reason to adopt foreign languages, then what is good enough? Another member put it in a different way: We really do not need to convince the Board of Education for the merits of our proposal. We need the board to dedicate enough funding to carry this program. So Team Central basically requests that you consider adding Chinese, Arabic, and Italian as second languages. Our student member, Logan Tao, wrote, applauding the school system for flexibility on case-by-case basis. He said, "It is good to know that BCPS is working together with individual schools to help reach decisions regarding safety of students and staff." "Many of my classes, my classmates, and I," he said, "either gotten sick "Many of my classes, my classmates, and I," he said, "either gotten sick or been in close contact with someone who was sick, thus requiring time away from school and quarantine." This would have made the workload... Well, I really hope you read by email the student member. I honestly loved his writing, and I'm sending you by email. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cindy Sexton with TABCO. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairwoman Hen, Vice Chair Pastore, Dr. Williams, and members of the Board. I look forward to the report on the proposed operating budget tonight. As I have said in, I think, every Board of Ed meeting, every meeting with Dr. Williams, the county executive, county council members, and quite frankly, anyone who will listen, the budget must put people first. We must do all that is in our power to retain the educators we have and to attract new educators to BCPS. We know our educators are fraught, overwhelmed, anxious, and many other adjectives. I hope the budget shows educators that BCPS is the place they want to start or continue their careers. Okay, now to getting safely through COVID. We do agree on many things, including that instruction must take place in a safe environment. We agree there is a staffing crisis, not just in BCPS, not just in education, and that it is affecting us greatly. We agree that some students are still struggling with the return to school buildings and that in-person instruction is best for the majority of our students. We know these are just the tip of the iceberg, and we have the opportunity to be sure that we address these topics and continue our collaborative work for all students and staff in our county. In a message to TABCO members this afternoon, I shared that the safety of our students, staff, and school communities is our priority, and we need to make sure we are as safe as possible and have the resources and conditions to provide the best possible education for our students and for the staff who support them. For the past week especially, TABCO has been actively engaged in many discussions with BCPS to try to come up with the best, most logical response to the Omicron phase of the pandemic. It's a confusing, difficult situation, and for many, it continues to be a scary situation. But the school system is working with TABCO and the other bargaining units so we can come together for the best solutions, given all the circumstances around COVID and all the involved parties who play a part, including health experts, state superintendent, elected officials, students, educators, parents, and more. Everything about COVID continues to be a challenge. We keep hoping we are nearing the end, and then we aren't. For almost two years, our health, careers, students, families, every facet of our lives have been affected. Educators keep doing what is best for students, and I want to publicly thank them again for all they do. It hasn't been easy, but we are all here because we want what is best for our students, and we'll keep working collaboratively with that as our goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is general public comment, and our first speaker is Don Blakely. Our next speaker is Jessica Longley. Good evening.
How are you?
Hi.
My name is Julie Wisman, and I'm a parent of two Baltimore County Public School students, and I wanted to take this opportunity to discuss the importance of maintaining the in-person learning for all BCPS students. I want to start by requesting that BCPS adopt the current CDC quarantine guidelines if they have not already been adopted during the closed session or prior. These new guidelines will help keep staff and students in schools where they belong. As we have learned over the past two years, virtual learning did not provide an adequate education. Test scores, attendance, GPAs, and behavior were all negatively impacted. To say that we have had a rough start to the school year is an understatement. The results of a year of isolation came crashing down. We have seen an uptick in school violence, discipline issues, and mental health breakdowns. The answer to fixing some of these behaviors is not more virtual learning. It is actually quite the opposite. They need to have consistent and reliable in-person learning. This on-and-off-again approach damages any progress that they have made over the last few months of in-person. As medical specialists have, all over the world, have stated, "We must learn to live with this virus. This virus will not magically disappear if you shut schools for one week, two weeks, or longer." As we have seen after a full year of school closures, we did not magically get rid of the virus. Closing schools again has been a fear of mine as a parent, and I was very encouraged when the guidelines were updated and released in December that showed that the only reason we have, that we would have a system-wide closure, would be if it was mandated by the county or state. There was no mention of any of the bargaining unions being key players in this decision. As a result, I was shocked to receive the letter Friday from BCPS, signed by Dr. Williams and all five of these associations, to whom I don't belong. At no point should the disruption of in-person learning be a topic for negotiations. We have to figure this out other ways. I agree that negotiations need to be made to protect the teachers and staff. However, this should not be at the expense of our children. The students are the reason you all have jobs. The students are your customers, and you are who they depend on for providing them with an education. I understand that this year is hard, and we've had staffing challenges. However, with all due respect, every profession, especially every single job in public service, has experienced these same shortages, and they have all remained open and in-person to serve the citizens of Baltimore County. The county received more than enough money from the state and federal government to use towards keeping schools in person. Why do we continue to collapse? Surrounding counties are open. Kids are learning and participating in sports and activities. Some of these schools have the highest numbers of students and staff with COVID in the entire state, yet they are still in person. Tell me what's different. How can they figure it out, but we can't? As a parent, I'm tired of hearing the reasons why we can't be in person. I want to start hearing the reasons that we can and we should. In closing, I would like to say that our students are our future doctors, lawyers, teachers, leaders, just to name a few. Help them succeed. Help them be great, and let them know that they matter. Thank you for your time. Ooh, perfect.
Our next speaker is Janelle Austin. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Janelle Austin, and I'm a parent of three BCPS students, but I am also a teacher. I am here to tell you that there is a hole in the bucket. In one of the governor's most recent press conferences, he asserted, "There is absolutely no situation, there's absolutely no substitute for in-person learning." And as an educator and a parent, I cannot in good faith argue with that. However, I do question the definition of in-person learning and what it means during these unprecedented times. Does this include pulling paraeducators and central office staff from their normal duties to cover classes? Does this include combining multiple classes in auditoriums and gymnasiums with substitutes? Does it include having students arrive hours late or not at all because bus drivers are also affected by this surge? These are all things that have already happened this year, and there is a hole in the bucket. There has been since the staffing shortage at the beginning of the year, and now the situation is considerably worse. In the same press conference, the governor mentioned that only 33% of students between the ages of five and 11 have been vaccinated. This means 66% of elementary-age students are more likely to contract and spread the virus, and that 66% of those students must quarantine if exposed. And 66% of the students are missing valuable class time, which increases the learning lag, even with the push for vaccinations as soon as possible. Meanwhile, and half or more of the class is absent, how does learning progress? It doesn't, and instead, we get another hole in the bucket. The governor urges all Marylanders to use common sense and do things that keep us safe, such as avoiding crowds, keeping your distance, and yes, wearing the mask. However, how is any of this possible in a 2,200-person high school where students routinely bottleneck in hallways, students and staff both need to eat, and that necessitates the removal of the mask? When this happens, students in cafeterias are less than two feet apart from each other, with someone directly in front, directly to the left, directly to the right, which causes no social distancing and more potential to spread. For this reason, I am urging and imploring you to put a two-week pause in in-person instruction for all BCPS schools. And I know this is not a perfect solution, but it will allow time to work on more permanent solutions, instead of repeatedly trying to use the leaking bucket to wet the stones, to sharpen the axe, to cut the straw, to fix the very same bucket. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jean Soulier. Hopefully I pronounced that correctly.
You did a great job, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'm Jean Soulier. I'm CEO and founder of Bus Patrol, the world's most deployed school bus safety program. We're a national provider that employs over 400 people. At a board meeting on December 7th, BCPS transportation staff and Baltimore County Police requested approval to sign an agreement with Bus Patrol to improve the safety of your students as they travel to and from school. They were not successful. I was compelled to come speak today in an effort to clear up some of the misconceptions I heard in the debate. Firstly, a claim was made that Bus Patrol was affiliated with the failed company Force Multiplier Solutions. This is patently false. I'm a technologist from Canada. Backed by a group of Canadian investors, we bought FMS technology assets and contracts in a competitive bid process. In fact, our intervention saved programs, as we supported school districts and law enforcement in their transition. Secondly, a claim was made that Montgomery County had not received any revenue from their program. This is false. An exhaustive audit demonstrated that MCPS received over $13 million, which they invested in technology and related services. The audit's main purpose was to validate the program's break-even point so that revenue sharing could begin as anticipated by the contract. That has resulted in the county receiving significant revenue. So far this school year, Montgomery County has received more than $2 million. Setting aside those commercial considerations, the reason we have succeeded at establishing a dominant position in the school bus safety industry is our focus on child safety. The programs we run are known for their integrity and known for protecting every student on every bus. In Maryland alone, this has earned us contracts in Montgomery County, Prince George's County, Howard County, Charles County, Carroll County, Queen Anne's County, with more to be announced shortly. During December's board meeting, the proactivity of the program was put into question. When every bus is equipped, we can generate and use meaningful data to identify problem areas. We can then proactively advise on moving stops, installing additional warning signs, plan ongoing public awareness campaigns. The proof is in our recidivism rate. 98% of people who get a ticket from Bus Patrol do not get a second one. By re-engaging with your transportation staff and approving this contract, you will make your students safer. BCPS will receive over $15 million in technology and related services at no upfront cost. Enforcement cameras will change driver behavior. Internal safety cameras will protect kids on the bus. Parent apps will reassure parents. Turn-by-turn navigation systems will help speed up driver training to better manage driver shortage issues. Over and above all of those benefits, Bus Patrol expects this program to generate $3 million in net new funding per year for BCPS. Your transportation professionals did their work in evaluating all of the options. Now they need your support so they can enjoy the benefits currently being enjoyed by the largest districts in the state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheena Bitner. Sheena Bitner. Our next speaker is William Blackford. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair. Superintendent Williams. I rise to speak to you this evening as the parent of two children who have been enrolled in BCPS since kindergarten. I have supported the idea of an institution of public education my entire life. My wife and I have donated time, money, have volunteered, and supported teachers at every step of our children's education. Like thousands of other reasonable parents and families throughout Baltimore County, my wife and I remain patient, understanding, and silent as BCPS continued to adapt to the COVID-19 pandemic. That patience and my faith in BCPS was broken last Friday around 5:00 PM when Dr. Williams issued his letter, closing schools for yesterday and today. As my wife read the email aloud and I watched my daughter cry, I realized the staggering lack of candor and transparency that parents have received from BCPS in the communications, as well as the lack of accountability of the accumulating record of failures to which no one seems to accept responsibility. Not for cyber attack and the responses that had unfair effects on our teachers, not for some of the toxic, ongoing partisan infighting regarding policies that seek to advance political goals at the expense of our children. There are many other failures. But all of those failures, there's one victim, and children have been the silent victim of our collective bungled response to COVID-19. Experts have agreed, and in fact, I refer you to Dr. Ajay Shah Brown, who just said there is no reason, there's no tenable reason to close schools at all again, which was just aired on this week on ABC. It confirmed that there is no tenable reason to close schools, that schools are safe, and the children remain best served by in-person instruction. We know that the virtual schooling does not work. We have witnessed it throughout the country. We know and see the mental health issues and its effects on our children. We see how students are unfairly falling behind locally, nationally, and internationally, as you can see, public school systems in other states remain open in both this country and throughout Europe, as well as, most gallingly, the fact that we know that local private schools have remained staffed and have remained open throughout, which continues to widen the gulf and the unfair achievement gap between children in Maryland. Now, we sit here with the prospect of shuttering schools yet again and the requests that we've heard here today to close, and in service of what? I came here because my daughter proposed, my daughter asked me to speak, and on behalf of countless other families who feel the same. It closing...
That's time, Mr. Blackford.
I would ask and encourage...
That's time, sir. If you have any additional comments, please email them to us. BOE@BCPS.org. Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Saroff. Good evening.
My name is Sharon Saroff, and I am a parent and a stakeholder in Baltimore County Public It is not true that students are in-person all across the country. As a matter of fact, school districts such as Ann Arbor, Michigan, Cincinnati, and Cleveland, Ohio are currently virtual. Prince George's County, Charles County here in Maryland, went virtual. Why is BCPS not doing a temporary virtual? We currently have a record-high amount of cases in this state, 89,000 as of last week. That equals a positivity rate of 28%, and there are 362 deaths. We know that it does come into the schoolhouse. There are students at record numbers that are getting this virus. Our hospitals are full. That includes the pediatric hospitals. They're turning people away. And kids are dying. Just last week, there was a child of 10 that passed away from this virus. Why are we open? We can't do what we need to do in the schoolhouse, and I've witnessed it because I've been in the schoolhouse. We have students in the classrooms crammed in, more than 20 students in a classroom, more than 30. Sometimes when we have to combine because teachers are out sick, we have 45 kids in a classroom. We can't social distance. We can't enforce masking. And we certainly can't enforce it in a cafeteria or a bus when we're next to each other or sitting three to a seat. Parents, I might add, are tired on both sides of the way things are going. It is confusing at best when I hear constantly, "This school is closed, that school is closed, the school is open, that school is open." I don't know from one day to the next if I'm going to have an IEP meeting, if my goddaughter is going to be able to go to school. As one child who was interviewed on Sunday put it, "I can't learn if I'm dead." I don't think I have anything further to say.
Our next speaker is Carol Vidal. Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a parent of two children in BCPS and a physician who specializes in pediatric psychiatry. And I first want to thank Dr. Williams for sending out a letter before the holidays stating that the goal was to avoid system-wide closures and to allow schools to make the decision case by case. And since I'm here, I also want to thank Ms. Deb Somerville for implementing impressive common sense COVID practices in the schools. My very competent principals and staff have been doing an excellent job staying open and retaining staff, and they should be used as a model to keep schools open. This is why other parents and I were surprised to see the need for two asynchronous days to prepare for potential future closures. Let's remember that President Biden, Dr. Fauci, Secretary of Education Cardona, Governor Hogan, Dr. Chowdhury from the Maryland State Department of Education, Dr. Valenski from the CDC, and the vast majority of reputable health experts have recommended that schools stay open. The reasons to stay open, all based on data and studies that I'm willing to share, are that kids are still at very low risk for COVID effects, that teachers are one of the professionals who are responsible for COVID. that teachers are one of the professions with less risk for COVID infections according to studies in the UK, that South Africa is already showing a steep decline in new cases, and deaths have not increased, meaning that Omicron is milder variant than the others and will be short-lived. We have a relatively high vaccinated population. School transmission is lower than community transmission. There is no shortage of money to make schools safe. And the negative effects of remote learning have been devastating for children. And mostly, most of the workplaces are back in person. Making school closures like the last two days is very difficult on working parents. I invite you to hear some of the parents' testimonies on needing to work and having to leave their young children alone at home. If staff shortages are an obstacle to keeping schools open, some recommendations are to adopt a five-day quarantine, like many have done, including my hospital, school districts like Howard County, and like the CDC has recommended, increase the pay of substitutes and make it easier for them to be hired, allow for volunteer parents to come help in the building, as many schools are doing, allow for simultaneous learning so that children who need to quarantine can still receive instruction, and have schools communicate the number of teachers who are sick and the number of bodies needed so that we can all pitch in and make keeping schools open a community effort. We also need to follow the state board resolution to count 180 days as days that are in person and with a teacher in the classroom, which was not the case the last two days. Virtual and asynchronous learning are not school. Finally, groups advancing their own agenda at the cost of our children should be stopped by this Board of Education and by this administration. For the last two years, we have been shut out of meetings, schools, and decisions. And parents will only regain the trust if the system does what is best for the students, which is to keep schools consistently open. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Erica Feldenser. Good evening.
Thank you all for allowing me to speak today. My name is Erica Feldenser, and I am an art teacher in Baltimore County Public Schools. I am also a trans person. And so, every day, I go to school, whether that is in person or virtual, over Google Meet. Many students that are a part of the LGBTQIA+ community come into my space, whether that's Google Meet or my classroom, as a safe place. They trust me, and so I allow them to come in and speak with me about their day. Some of the things that I am hearing from them are alarming. Many of the things that they tell me about their experiences oftentimes include bullying and harassment based on their identity, being hurt in different transitional spaces, such as hallways, bathrooms, but also on social media. And oftentimes, the invalidation of their identity is very painful to hear. It hurts me that many of my students do not feel safe around their peers or in their school community, afraid to speak openly about their experiences, and they feel very isolated. It can be very draining to hear a lot of these experiences. And so, oftentimes, I've also heard that LGBTQIA+ students must travel a very long distance all the way across the entire building to use a restroom that would allow them to feel safe and offer privacy. Myself and a couple of my colleagues are working on developing a professional development program that would allow these conversations to occur amongst adult staff surrounding gender identity and sexual orientation. These resources could be made widely available to all staff across BCPS school sites through the implementation of equity teams. There needs to be time and resources allocated to protecting the safety of LGBTQIA+ students in Baltimore County Public Schools. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, and for that, I call on Dr. Williams.
Good evening, Board Chair Hinn, Vice Chair Pastore, and members of the Board of Education. I am pleased to present my superintendent's report to the Board and Team BCPS. My team and I will regularly update the Board, our community and Team BCPS during this time of change. Our partnership is critical to ensuring high-quality services to students, staff, and families of Baltimore County. Next slide. As a system, we continue with our efforts to recover, rebuild, and heal. While many will like it to be business as usual, there continue to be signs that this year presents unprecedented challenges. Our partnership is vital to achieving our system goals. BCPS continues to utilize several safety measures to preserve and protect in-person learning in a safe and supportive environment. These include providing COVID-19 resources to students, staff, and families to ensure shared understanding and promote safe learning environments, implementing a layered testing response, including diagnostic testing of students or staff who develop symptoms during the school day. School nurses and our external testing partner will continue to provide onsite PCR testing for schools experiencing persistent or school-wide COVID-19 outbreak, routine screening testing of unvaccinated staff and student athletes. All staff members, regardless of vaccination status, will continue to have access to cyan diagnostic weekly testing. Additionally, we are continuing to require masking in all schools and facilities and provide KN95 masks for staff and students as an additional option, implementing rolling temporary school transitions to virtual learning using a collaborative huddle process, providing central office emergency substitute coverage to maintain school operations, and expanding access to weekly screening testing to all middle and high school unvaccinated students who participate in after-school activities. More information is forthcoming. School buildings were closed on Monday, January 10th, and today, Tuesday, January 11th, to provide staff with the time needed to access PCR testing, pick up rapid test kits, KN95 masks, and prepare instructional lessons in the event of a temporary transition to virtual learning for their specific school. Schools, except for those temporarily providing virtual instruction, will reopen tomorrow, Wednesday, January 12th, for in-person instruction. Athletic practices will resume, and an announcement about extracurricular activities is forthcoming. COVID-19 Rapid Antigen Test Kits were distributed to families today. We have ordered additional test kits, and the Office of Health Services will use these kits in cases of suspected outbreaks. Distribution of KN95 masks as an additional option for students and staff begin Wednesday, January 5th, 2022. Additional orders for KN95 masks have been placed to build our current PPE supply. We are pleased that we have been able to provide these high-demand, short-supply resources to our communities so that they feel safe. As a reminder, masks are required in all of our buildings. We appreciate your help in reinforcing this message so that we can maintain in-person learning. Decisions to move an individual school or groups of schools to virtual learning are made after careful consideration and close collaboration with the BCPS Office of Health Services. A decision to pause in-person learning and activate remote learning is made only after a group of school and central office leaders meet to discuss critical factors, including the number of staff and students who have tested positive for COVID-19 in a 14-day period, the number of staff and students currently in quarantine, the number of staffing vacancies at the school, special program considerations, and overall impact on a school's ability to maintain its normal daily operations, the availability of substitute teachers, and whether the school can provide in-person instruction in a safe and supportive environment. In the event, next slide, please. In the event of temporary transition to virtual learning, our process includes community notification from Baltimore County Public Schools and the principal. This letter includes dates, mail distribution information, and details about the bell schedule. Community notice is available in multiple languages. In addition to community notification, school status is published to our COVID-19 dashboard webpage for the broader BCPS community. Our schools continue to take proactive measures that foster safe, secure, and supportive environments. So prior to winter break, we hosted a series of town hall meetings to hear from our communities. Our next steps to help schools focus on teaching and learning include: This week, we will send a reinforcing message about student behavior expectations. Schools will share copies of their discipline plans with families. We will continue to work with our BCPS Student Council for student-led campaigns. This month, Parent Teacher Association Council of Baltimore County will meet to design discipline-related community outreach. And we will host a virtual multi-district roundtable session to problem solve. The nature of trauma means that there are no quick fixes to these challenges. We all need to work together to ensure optimal learning environments for our students. So we will continue to update the Board, our community and Team BCPS during these changing times. Our partnership is critical to assuring a safe and successful year for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And now I'll open it up to Board members for questions and comments.
I will ask Dr. Zarchin, Dr. Yarborough, Ms. Charlie Green, and Deb Somerville to be on standby, as well as our community superintendents.
Thank you. And I ask those Board members participating remotely to please indicate in the chat if you have questions. And our first Board member is Ms. Scott, I believe. Ms. Scott, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you so much, Chair Hinn. And thank you, Dr. Williams, for the presentation and for staff, for everything that you all are doing. I know this is not easy. It can't be easy, as there's no playbook for how to run a school during a pandemic. My question was, and I wanted to know, if you could explain, what are the metrics, the health metrics? And I've seen this, it's been on the website, but I would like for you to say and explain, what are the health metrics that determine a school going virtual? Does that apply? Are they the same for high school, middle school, elementary school? And if you could just speak further about that and explain what determines whether or not a school stays in person and goes virtual?
Yes, I will call Ms. Somerville and Dr. Zarchin. What we look at is the totality of that individual school, the number of staff tested, testing positive, as well as students, the quarantine numbers, the number of vacancies, and special program consideration. But I will ask Ms. Somerville and Dr. Zarchin to add additional information.
Thanks, Dr. Williams. I think you captured it very well. I think it's the totality of the situation. There's no single metric that would drive a school closure. We know that we're operating during a surge and a pandemic, and so we need to look at how that surge is affecting the student attendance, the staff attendance, and our ability to provide a safe learning environment for our students.
And that's the ultimate deciding factor. Is it safe? So we have heard from our health experts, that the County Department of Health, State Department of Health, over and over again, schools should be the last to close and the first to open. Students need to be in school. We are doing everything we can to keep them in school, in-person learning. So ultimately, we go through a list, we have a conversation. If it's safe to open the school, we keep the school open.
I would just add, if you recall, a year ago, that we had a metric as the health professionals were learning more about COVID. And then at that point, we moved away from those health metrics based on the health of professionals, such as the Maryland Health Department and CDC guidelines. And so, just to reiterate, as you said, Ms. Scott, there is no playbook for all of this. We all have worked collaboratively within the system and across the state to ensure that we can maintain in-person learning. But it requires that collaborative process. As one of the slide references, a huddle consideration, those closest to really have those conversations to see what those options may be.
Thank you for that. And my other question would be, as far as an option for virtual learning for parents, let's say their child is not symptomatic or they're not showing signs of COVID. What is, I guess, the likelihood or probability, or maybe it's feasibility, of us having an optional virtual learning program that parents can opt into?
Optional learning?
Virtual learning program.
So at some point, as you recall, last year, we opened virtually and we went into a hybrid model where we have concurrent teaching. Students were home, some students were in class. And as we were visiting schools, and many of the staff did that as well, we saw the challenge of trying to maintain that concurrent model. And thanks to our Board and supporting our efforts, and thanks to our Esser Grant, we proceeded with a virtual learning program that we're implementing this year. And so, at this point, I don't see the expansion at this time. But at some point, if this continues and we see more and more schools unable to operate, I think we would have to just explore as many options as possible.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And I just wanted to say, you know, I understand. Like I said, there's no playbook. You all are doing an exceptional job. And I just wanted to know how we, as the Board, can make sure that we are supporting the system and supporting you in the efforts to make sure that we are ultimately supporting our children?
So I would say I would encourage the vaccines. That's very important. I would also encourage the wearing of masks. And we have worked for our staff. As we've shared with the Board, there are times where students and staff may need a break in wearing their masks. We have purchased KN95. I shared with staff the other day, the cloth mask, the surgical mask, and the KN95. They are still resources. And so, that's why we went ahead and tried to provide these resources for our staff and our students. The decision to go asynchronous learning for the last two days, supplies were coming in, and the kits. And we wanted to give the schools the resources. And then the bad weather, of course. I don't know if that helped or hindered, but I know it delayed some of our shipment. But we utilized these two days to really get everyone on the same playing field that if, if, we have to do virtual, that our students and our staff were prepared, as well as our students. And so, I would just continue to help support what the Office of Health Services and the Baltimore County Health Department are providing to our communities, that we can encourage students and staff to continue to use the mitigation strategies. I would appreciate that from the full Board. And you have. You have shared information. You've been speaking to other constituents. I would just ask that you continue to do that. Our goal is to preserve in-person learning. This is about operation, that the last thing we want to do, as Dr. Zarchin said, is close a school. But we have to look at the operation. And what's happening with COVID is one piece of the big puzzle. And what's happening with COVID is one piece of the big puzzle, as we started this year, with staffing shortages, as I reported back in September. So this is an area that we are working collaboratively. So your voice to educate, to inform, would be greatly appreciated.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Williams, for you, your staff, and all that you're doing for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Ms. Joes, and then Ms. Rowe and Ms. Mack.
Thank you, Ms. Hen. Dr. Williams, I saw that the athletics testing will begin January 11th, and practices will be beginning January 14th. So will all, could you clarify, all athletes will be tested on January 14th regardless of vaccination status?
Ms. Somerville, Dr. Zarchin.
So testing is open to all athletes, it's required of unvaccinated athletes?
Okay, thank you. I also, you know, I want to point out that I, if teachers and staff that are sick or under quarantine, there will be definitely lost learning in terms of specialty instructions that, you know, staff might not be able to carry out. What would trigger something like that? Would that be a metric you would consider if X amount of staff has been called out? And I also want to give a shout out to the CNI team and central office, because I know, including you, Dr. Williams, you have all been stepping up and providing instruction. I know it's hard, because that takes away from your regular work, so thank you. I also know many of the teachers are being aligned, that they are pushing for schools to be closed. That is not true. It is a pandemic, and we need to be cognizant of that and support our teachers and staff. So if you could answer my question about what would trigger a school to go virtual, the amount of staff that's absent?
So again, it comes down to safety. We look at schools, for that specific school, what they have available, what their needs are. One of the beauties of going into schools and helping with that coverage is you see how important that time, students, just students together, students in class, the socialization, the relationships. When we can open schools safely, or keep them open safely, that's our priority. If there's a safety issue, we're not going to take a chance to putting a student or a staff member at risk. That's the conversation in those huddles. That's what's worked through. We err on the side of safety, but we understand the mental health needs of having not just our students, but our adults in the buildings, in a routine of going to school. One of the fears of having a set metric that you look at is that becomes the focus. We want the focus to be on learning and focusing on what's going on in the classroom.
So it's really, and thank you, Dr. Zarchin, in addition, just the operational process. So when you saw we started to close certain schools, a big chunk of them were elementary. So if you kind of think about, our elementary schools are a little bit smaller and may not have the staff to cover that second, third grade class, or that third, fourth grade class. Many of our secondaries, larger schools, will have many more staff in the ideal world. But we've had, we started the year with vacancies. We started the year with substitutes. And as Dr. Zarchin said, that's when we pull our school leaders and representatives to come to the table, and working with our executive directors and community superintendent to look at what's best for this school, how can we proceed? We ask questions, we have these dialogues. Sometimes these huddles are not one and done, they're multiple huddles. But I must also answer your other question, Ms. Joes. Kudos to our central office staff, because we put out that request, we need bodies. That's what the principal said. We need bodies and buildings to help in a variety of ways. And so our central office staff from a variety of offices, especially including CNI, have made the time and effort to report to schools and to be of service to those schools and to those principals. And if there is a specialty course, an advanced level course, and that staff member is out, we do look at our resources, not only in the building, but also within central office. And sometimes our staff, I'm gonna look at HR, they may tell me not to say this, sometimes our staff are willing to support even when they may not be under the weather, and they're willing to report remotely. Let me clarify that. Am I going to HR jail? Okay, okay, I just want to make sure. So when it comes to these specialty courses, we work with the principal, we work with CNI to provide the best support that we can. But in the ideal world, schools would be able to cover, but in addition to what we're dealing with, with the pandemic, we were dealing with shortages. And so that's why, as Dr. Zarchin said, we have to look at the totality. The last thing we want to do is close the school.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, and thank you, staff.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joes. Ms. Rowe?
So one of the things I've heard from the public is that there seems, I don't even know actually if this is true, maybe you can confirm this, that Baltimore City and some other school districts are doing weekly PCR pool testing of all students and staff. And I would like to know why we are not doing that, and if that's something that's feasible, and if it's not, why?
So there are some districts that are doing weekly testing, but none of those districts are doing more than 50%. So it's a small number. So to test a child, you have to have parent consent. And so the parents that opt into weekly testing, by and large, it's not the majority of students. As we looked at whether weekly testing was a strategy we wanted to take on, we looked at a number of factors. The first is when you do pool testing, we were not interested in. A pooled test, what happens, it actually works, from my perspective, I think our perspective, against student learning, because when the pool is positive, it takes all the swabs from the classroom, puts them in one test tube, runs it, it can be done quickly. Large numbers of tests can be run, which is why the labs prefer that strategy. But when the pool or the classroom is positive, the pool stays home until you can confirm which member of the pool was positive. What was being rolled out in the summer in pooled testing, and right now still true because of the availability of rapid tests, is the whole pool is then out for two days for one case. So that was a concern of ours about whether that was an important strategy. The second, the second part about the use of testing as a primary strategy is that when you do PCR tests, you get the results two days later. What we've learned from the CDC is our most infectious time is in those initial days. So if, and what we find even from employee testing, is a lot of the folks are mildly symptomatic and say, oh, I just thought it was my cold. So by the time the test comes back, the person has been infectious in school for several days. So do you pull them out at some point? Yes, there's a benefit. So then we looked at feasibility, the very point you brought up. How much staff and human resource time does it take, and what does it detract from learning? And overall, what we decided was to do targeted testing of higher-risk groups for screening, and not to do broad-based screening. We didn't think that it would make a big impact. And when I look at the data, each week, we get data from MSDE, the districts that do the pooled testing, I don't believe have any difference really in transmission rates or case rates than we do. So we continue to look at it. We have a testing partner through the state testing program. If we see data trends that suggest we need to do more screening tests, our partner can roll that out. But right now, it's not the cornerstone of our strategy.
Do we know approximately how much of our student body is fully vaccinated?
So you're catching me, and I haven't looked at that in a couple days, but before the holidays, I think overall, at the secondary level, it was roughly in the 60%, and it's lower in the elementary, closer to 40. But I can get you that detailed report later.
Okay. And can you confirm for me, one of the things that I've heard is that when you do the rapid test, that sometimes the rapid test does not show positive until after a person's symptomatic and already staying home anyway? Is that true?
Correct. So rapid tests, particularly with Omicron, seem to be of concern. There's a lot of discussion in the literature. We still think a rapid test is an important tool. But like all of our tools, there's not a single strategy that's going to help. We know the most effective strategy is masking. It's boring now for us, but it seems to be, from schools that have been open during the pandemic, masking reduces transmission. Staying home when we're sick or been exposed is probably the next strategy. And adding that testing to know what you've got is a really important piece. But it's, you know, it's all these things together build a web that help us keep our schools open and safe.
So do you think that there is a method of early testing, or like, because I guess the idea is that if you tested the student body, you could catch people that were asymptomatic. And what it sounds to me like you're saying is that theoretically, but that isn't really what happens. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, yes, ma'am. I am saying that that, in theory, would require, with the transmission rates we have right now, almost daily testing to pick up the cases, and almost immediate results. Neither of those are the world we're living in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Ms. Mack?
Thank you both very much. I can't imagine being in your jobs right now. Former CDC Director Scott Gottlieb said that with the increased transmission rate of Omicron, that he does not suggest that people continue to wear cloth masks, even if they're good cloth masks with like three layers, and he suggests KN95s. Dr. Williams discussed that in the slide. But are we going to require KN95, or we're going to offer them?
So the consensus seems to be that the most important mask is a well-fitting mask that you will keep on all day. So whether that, and so a KN95, for some people, is an excellent option, and again, why the district has sought to procure and distribute those immediately. However, some, many folks cannot tolerate the high filtration of a KN95. It becomes uncomfortable for them. A well-fitting cloth mask or surgical mask is acceptable, and what I've read most recently is many health experts suggest people who are concerned may consider adding a second layer.
Okay. And given the increased transmission of Omicron, are we making any changes in how we're dealing with children in congregate settings like cafeterias?
Not at this point. We had not, we have not seen real changes in transmission at school, except for more cases being seen in school, because our rates mirror the community.
And my final question is, on my way here tonight, I was notified that there's a problem with the liquid in the test kits that we plan to send home with children. Is that, I have not researched it, I just want to know if there's truth to that, and we won't be sending them home?
So we're sending them home. They need to be under adult supervision. So whenever we send, distribute things to little people, our littlest people tend to be curious and not wise. And so we did the test tube, it would take a very energetic little person to open a test kit, rip off the label, and then pour it in their eyes, but the chemical that's in there could burn an eye. So for our youngest students, we are not distributing them, you know, by backpacks. The parents picked them up today.
And what are we going to do for parents who really don't have access, ready access to transportation, if we want the kids and the families to have those tests?
That's something we're working through now. That is an important question. We're trying to find a solution for that.
Great, thank you. Thank you again. Thank you for all you've been doing.
Thank you. Dr. Hager?
Yes, I also want to thank you. Every time I hear a media guideline or media headline about how many schools are closed, I always want to say, but look how many are open, because so many are open. The overwhelming majority have stayed open because of all the work that you guys have done. So thank you so much for setting these guidelines and keeping us open. And of course, thanks to all the staff who've been working so hard on all this time. So speaking of needing bodies in schools, so you mentioned that we have been able to get central office staff in schools, is there an opportunity for vaccinated parent volunteers to also help out during this challenging time?
So we have been working with our principals and executive directors on that. That was an issue that the board raised about volunteers, I want to say in November, December. And so one concern we had, that certain areas had a higher percentages than others. But definitely, if we can go out in central office, absolutely, we would encourage the volunteers to work with their principals, particular on the needs. And so, yes.
So there's no BCPS reason that parents can't volunteer in schools at this point?
I don't, let me just check with my team. The last time we talked, there was no reason based, and remember, we talked before winter break.
Yeah.
We were concerned, we had questions, but we clarified with our executive directors, like community superintendents and principals, to really look at that additional option. So, yes.
That would be wonderful, I'm sure. Huge help. And my next question may go into operation, so stop me if I get too far ahead of myself. We've heard a lot about the five-day isolation, five-day quarantine guidance from the CDC, and I've heard that we're kind of waiting for kind of the higher-level guidance on whether we can adopt that. Is that something the board could move to adopt from kind of the system up, or is it, do we really need to wait until we get guidance from above to be able to put that into place?
So it goes back to, I think, what Ms. Joes, her question. I would say, give us a few more days.
Fine, yeah.
To work with our partners. Again, we still meet weekly, as Ms. Somerville said, we meet with our Baltimore Health experts and our Johns Hopkins University of Maryland doctors. So give us some opportunity to, we have the suggested CDC guidelines, we see some systems, smaller systems have moved forward, some other systems are doing this blend. I would just say, at this point, we've had some conversations on yesterday, if you'll allow us just a few more days, so we can get that support from our local health officer, and that would be great. And if not, I will circle back to the board.
And I want to thank you for that question, because I know that's a question that continues to come up with parents. We want kids in school, but we also, we want to do this strategically. We want to continue to work with our partners, medical experts. Dr. Branch and his team have been phenomenal. From day one, they've been working with us. They're doing the same with this decision. We want to do it together and move forward and look at any, you know, potential issues that we may face. But they've been working, recently as today, I spoke with Dr. Branch, and he's been a great support.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hager. Ms. Pester?
Thank you. Dr. Williams and staff, as everyone has said, thank you very much for the work that you all are doing with the testing, trying to make sure everyone is as safe as possible. And I hope this hasn't been asked, but if it has, please humor me and repeat it. What is the instructional model for students who, for example, might be asymptomatic, who might have been exposed, but they have not been shown to be positive, or they're waiting for a test result? What happens while they are out of school? What does the instructional model look like for those children?
So we're going to call Ms., excuse me, Dr. Boswell.
Good evening, Chair Hen, Dr. Williams, members of the board, and good evening, Ms. Pester, and our members who are joining us virtually. Our model for instruction for those students who have been quarantined is really worked out in a very unique way at each school, because it depends, the number of students that are in quarantine, what the teaching situation is. And so we really customize that approach so that we can provide as much optimal instruction for those students. In some instances, it may involve tutoring after school, that may be done virtually. It may involve, in some instances, students who can observe classrooms. And I don't know, Dr. Williams, if we perhaps may want to invite one of the CSs to explain how that's a unique process tailored really to each of those customized situations, so...
Dr. Roberts? Thank you.
Good evening. So Ms. Pester, the processes, depending to Dr. Boswell-McComas's statements, the schools, the principals will set up a system with their, working with their educational advisory councils, and working with their staff, to offer tutoring for students who are out on quarantine. So you could have, depending at the elementary level, you could have it by grade level, so there could be for two or three teachers at a grade level, one of those teachers were offered on a rotating basis through the grade level. At the high school level or the secondary level, you could do it by department. So on any given day, you would have X number of departments offering tutoring for those students. So that's really set up by the that's really set up by the schools, based on their size, the staff, and certainly the level.
One of the key pieces, I'll just add if I may, Dr. Roberts, one of the key pieces there and working to tailor that is to help optimize and keep students moving forward on pace with the standards of that unit, so that it's less in isolation. So that's really why we're trying to take as much of a tailored approach to that as possible.
Okay. And with that, does some, what happens when the students return? I'm sure it's tailored based on the school and the courses as well. But when they come back, what might they expect from the school in terms of making sure that whatever was given to them while they were quarantined puts them in a place where they can go back into their classes and, you know, feel comfortable that they're at least close to where their classmates are?
Yes, a great point, Ms. Pester. So certainly not dissimilar to when a student is out for any illness for a medium to an extended period of time. Because of School G, because we've transformed over the years to a digital platform and a digital ecosystem, we're able to, students are able to submit work as they're doing the work. So that work is graded. Feedback is provided to those students as they are home. When they do return, teachers still do offer coach classes, so those students could still take advantage of coach classes for a particular area that they may feel they need some extra support on, or if the teacher feels the student needs extra support on. So we have that avenue still available for the student. And then certainly, again, depending on the level, depending on the grade level, there's peers, there's tutoring offered by our National Honor Societies and other groups. So there's certainly support offered for the student. But again, because of our digital platform, students are able to submit work and get feedback while they're, while they're in quarantine.
Thank you both. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Causey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to reiterate the, our dedication to the students to get through this situation. And I do appreciate all of the staff and the parent input as well, and everyone that is just so interested in our students doing as well as they can. To dovetail with the previous question, is there a minimum number of hours of instruction that is necessary for the student to align with the MSDE so it counts for an instructional day?
Well, I think, and we, we can talk about how attendance fits into this. So I think your, your question around the hours really ties into attendance requirements. What's really fundamental from the instructional lens is that whether a student is in person or a student may be on quarantine for a while, or out sick and back in, is that instructionally we need to constantly be monitoring and paying attention to those, those standards as we set forward and accelerate at learning, right? So we need to understand what those prerequisites are for the students to perform against standard, and where they're not at that proficiency to build out opportunities to provide small group instruction and extra practice coaching and feedback on that. So I know that's not answering your question around the hours, right? But I just want to communicate that the essence of this is really how do we ensure that learning is progressing within the timeframe that we need them to make that progress? So in terms of the hours, I'm, I'm going to defer, my colleague here, I think, works with the attendance. And I don't know what the, you know, how MSDE's guidance has been around attendance, because I believe when they're in quarantine, that's considered in attendance.
So, so Ms. Causey, let me just respond to that question, and then if Dr. Zarchin wants to add to it. You know, we're treating it like a student who's been out sick. So we can't assume that that student can actually do what he or she needs to do as if they were in the school building. And so it goes back to what I believe Ms. Pester was saying, that what can, what resources are available while they're quarantined and what resources are available with the transition. And so I would say, stay tuned. These questions we all have, and we need a little bit more discussions with MSDE regarding attendance. The hours, the hour conversation has not been discussed. And I think folks know that we're not going to set, set down the number of hours per student, even though the calendar year speaker talked about the 180 days, which also adds the hours as well. But we are in the midst of a pandemic. And so I would just stay tuned to that as we are now in January. We are having more discussions across this state to talk about attendance and days and hours. So I would just say, stay tuned for that. We may be able to provide some updates once we hear from MSDE.
Thank you for that clarification. So is there a different attendance code that tracks students that are absent for quarantine, where they're not, where they're not sick, but they have an exposure and they, they have to be quarantined?
Dr. Zarchin, would you give a brief update on that?
Yeah, so, so we do have a code for quarantine absences now, and that's new this year.
Okay, thank you. And, and that's been communicated to parents so they know in terms of writing notes and that sort of thing. Okay, thank you. The other thing is I-
Keep in mind is how we're capturing the data. So if it's related to isolation, quarantine, there's the communication. So it's one thing to capture that data, which Dr. Zarchin mentioned, versus a regular appointment or illness. So the communication is between the parent and school because they're having those conversations if that student is going to be out due to, you know, due to the pandemic.
Often the school nurse.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Because I know many parents and students are concerned about what their attendance looks like, especially if they're applying for magnet applications or college.
Well, and I, I want to touch on that because that's an important piece and really a mind shift. The days of striving for perfect attendance are long gone. We are not encouraging that. It's a focus on health. So, so there was a time where that was important to many. We're discouraging that and really trying to move away from that.
Thank you. And, and thank you for the explanation about the instruction. So is it possible, because again, I heard concerns from teachers at the TABCO legislative virtual meeting and also support personnel, that there, the students come back behind. So is there plans to increase students observing the classroom instruction so that they can gain more instructional time while they're on quarantine, or if they're isolating but feel well enough to attend?
In terms of students like Tella watching into the classroom, just to make sure I understand your question, I, I believe that's something that needs to be discussed with our union to make sure that that's, you know, in agreement with our partners.
Okay. And I'm certainly not suggesting concurrent teaching.
Thank you.
I observe that. It's very difficult. Absolutely not. The other thing is, in terms of substitute teachers, is there an opportunity to increase pay this year?
I think we looked at a variety of options, Ms. Causey, about our vacancies. And, and so we, we've actually worked with some of our other staff members who may have significant training that can go in. So we're, we're looking at all options. So we provided some increases. We looked at retention bonuses, and we reported that. So we've provided a lot of incentives. We'll continue, you know, substituting is, is, is challenging, you know, and, and versus hall duty, lunch duty, bus duty, just being in the office. And so we're looking at all options. But we started with opening up for our central office to come in. We had the conversation about volunteers. We're providing some incentives. We're looking at our retirees and what we can do to entice them to come back to work. So we're looking at all options, Ms. Causey.
Thank you. I'm smiling, but you can't tell.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Ms. Hen. And thank you all so much for your dedication during this time, especially with the past two days, with the snow days and everything, continuing to, to make sure that we have proper mitigation methods in our schools. One of the questions that a lot of students have been having, which might have been already answered, but I just want to ask again, is, you know, why are we still congregating in the cafeterias with our masks off while we're eating lunch? And when I did a bunch of school visits in the past few months, in some schools, like the elementary schools, there were opportunities for students to eat in different places where they were more spread apart. So I was wondering why, if we have the ability to go back to classrooms, you know, why are we still in lunchrooms?
Well, it's, it's, it's a challenge. We're trying to do the best we can. Every once in a while, we'll get a request. Can we move to classrooms? Sometimes that means that students are actually closer. I know parents have volunteered to help manage classroom lunches. Unfortunately, that brings other folks into the classroom. It, it has been a challenge. We're continuing to work and be creative, but right now, across the board, that's our best solution right now. And we're not seeing great spread. And that's probably the most important part, maybe I should have led with that, in school and in the cafeterias. When we look at our contact tracing rate, those are close contacts, our percentage is one.
1.4.
1.4. So again, when we look at closing a school and keeping a school open, we feel that the kids are safest in school. They're wearing masks. We're putting mitigation strategies in place wherever we can. You know, and that's a 1.4% of close contacts. So we're monitoring it closely. If that changes, and we've been concerned with Omicron that it may, we're not seeing it yet, but we may have to come up with other options.
And keep in mind, that's the work of our school principals. If you never ran a school of 500 versus 2,000, actually, I ran 2,800, in trying to move 2,800 bodies into classrooms to have lunch, you know, it's the operations. It's the, it's not just COVID. It's the operations that we're looking at the totality. Our principals have been working nonstop. We call it a huddle, and we ask the questions. They are, they are working with their educator councils. They're working with their schools. You know, they're, they're being very creative. Remember, our school buildings all don't look the same. So we can't just put a blatant statement out there, this is what you're going to do, because it's not necessarily going to work. We have to rely on our, on that team that will come together. And I have seen some very creative ways in which our principals are doing just for that reason around the lunch. And again, secondary is a little bit different than elementary, but it's, it's the operations.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And I, I know that in the previous community updates, extracurricular activities have been paused. I, I might not have read something recently, but is there a plan to resume them? And what date is that?
So there is.
Dr. Yarborough?
Yes. Good evening, and thank you for that question, Mr. Thomas. There is a plan to resume extracurricular activities. As stated in Dr. Williams' statement on December 30th, we're expanding the opportunity for middle school and high school students to participate in screening vaccination, regardless of vaccination status. So in the same way that for the students, athletes, we needed a few weeks to set that up and ramp it up with our vending partner, we have to do the same thing. So the first communication went out December 30th. There are going to be reminders from the schoolhouse. The link is already there, embedded in that document. There will be reminders as well as on our website. And in the, the next communication that comes out, it'll give the start date of when we hope to start that. But we want to make sure that we do that safely as possible. And we want to make sure that we recognize not only our student athletes, but also the students involved in extracurricular activities and give them an opportunity to participate.
Thank you for that. What are some of, this might, again, go into operation, so please stop me if that, if that is the case. A lot of students have also brought up concerns with masking and how they don't feel like masks have always been enforced, and especially right now, as we're going in, that they're not being enforced in the way that they should be. We've mentioned those mask breaks, but I was wondering if maybe you could provide more insight onto the enforcement of masking in schools?
So we have been working with our principals to look at options, to get the message. And during the Baltimore County Student Council is when I shared, I said, students, this is where we need your help and your leadership to get that message out. The masks, they do help. And, and so we're having the conversations where, and this is a little bit of a philosophical concern that I have, clamping down on no masks, then there's disciplinary action. If you recall back in the day with cell phones, you got the cellphone disciplinary action. So we want to, we want to have a good balance. We want to encourage, we want to educate. We providing the, the resources. We, we're working with our principals. But I know that is a concern. That came up as a concern from some of our stakeholders about what happens if a student chooses not to. Then we will have to deal with the individuals. This is a health pandemic. So this is, we don't want to take that lightly as well. So I would just turn to see if Dr. Yarborough, Dr. Zarchin, want to add anything about the masks.
I just want to share, in being, having the opportunity to be in schools and see students and staff, I was really pleased, not only were the masks being worn, but they were being worn properly. We don't always see that here, unfortunately, at this table. But the students, almost to a student in an elementary school and a middle school, I don't know that I saw one student with a mask down or off, certainly not off completely. I, I think there's an awareness that it's important by our students.
So to that point, I'm going to take a page out of Dr. Hager's point. We want to thank the students for, and the staff. But there's those exceptions. And in the schools that I attended and visited and supported, the staff kind of know who they, who the students are. It's not the majority. It's the, it could potentially be that same little student who's been busy all year. And so they know their names, they know, and outreach, and support from the family would be important. So it is a concern, but we're trying to educate, and we're trying to make sure everyone knows the importance of, of, of wearing their masks.
Thank you. And yesterday was, a lot of time was given to teachers to prepare for the possibility of virtual learning. I was wondering, what kind of guidance was maybe given to teachers as to how they could prepare, what they should be kind of doing in the event that we, their school has to go to temporary virtual learning? What kind of guidance were I guess teachers given with regards to that and creating lessons?
Well, just to be short, you know, our staff has gone through this before. So, so they've learned by choice. And by no choice, they had to go through this. Just like anything, I will say, the digital platform, School G, there's a lot of resources. We've learned from our staff. They have been updating suggestions. But that's the work of CNI and the schools to provide those resources. But we wanted the staff to have the time to transition if we have to go into a virtual learning situation.
Thank you. And those were all the questions I had. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And thank you all for your extraordinary efforts. I'm well aware the goalposts keep moving, the guidance keeps moving, everything keeps moving. And this approach, and it's the right approach, involves so much more work than a one-size-fits-all. It would be so much easier to shut us down, you know, apply the same solution to every school. This is the right approach. I've heard from so many in the community that are appreciative, that we're looking at every school, as Dr. Williams said, as a unique situation. And we truly are preserving in-person learning for every student by doing so. But the amount of work, it is operations. It absolutely is. And the challenges that go along with it. And I appreciate our principals and, and school-based staff and just everyone. As, as Ms. Mack has said, I think, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes right now. And I'm appreciative of all the work that has gone into making this possible. So I want to start by saying thank you to you and your teams and everyone involved. And for a question I want to return, it's great, my board members have asked most of my questions already, so it's, it's helpful to go last here. But Dr. Hager asks a question that I want to return to, and that's about parent volunteers. We have so many parents with so much energy around this who want to be our partners in preserving in-person learning and want to help. And that energy, much like our students, when it's not expended in a productive way, can turn into negative energy. And that's something that's very concerning to me, because having that positive relationship between teachers and homeschool relationships have suffered as a result of this pandemic. And one of my goals this year is how do we rebuild that? How do we rebuild that trust? How do we rebuild that partnership? that trust? How do we rebuild that partnership? Because that's something that COVID has also damaged. How do we start to rebuild and repair that relationship? How can parents help? And whether it's volunteering in schools, working with principals, I've heard of a lot of variation in what parents are able to do in their schools. And it's great to hear Dr. Williams say, you know, let's, let's do this, let's go for it. But at the same time, some principals are more open to receiving that help than others. Is there anything that we as a board can do, that we as a system can do to provide more formal opportunities for parents to help? Because the energy's there, the willingness is there. How can we formalize that and invite them in?
So I'd, I'd like to start by acknowledging the great work, if we call it work, that parents are doing. Getting students vaccinated, you know, their children vaccinated when they can. Keeping students home from school when they're sick. That's not an easy thing to do. Many of our parents are managing not only one job, but multiple jobs, and it, it's a great impact, and we know that. We want our kids to be in school learning, but there are times right now, we just, we can't have that the way we want it. So those two things alone, we really need to, to recognize and, and we kind of honor the work and love that parents are showing at home. These are not easy times for anyone. Another piece that I would like to add, when you're working with a nurse who's calling and saying, your child is, is not well, it, we know it's not easy, please do not take it out on the nurse. They are doing incredible work. They are stretched thin. It, it's, it's in the best interest of the students, the staff, our community, but they are taking heat and, and getting pushback that is not, not appropriate, it, it's not needed, and it's not, it's not helping. That's a, a small group. I, I want to share that. But it's enough, it's, it's impacting the morale of our nurses who we need in, in schools. So that's, those three things for me. First two, they're doing, parents, our family members, guardians are doing incredible things to keep our students safe. Thank you. Please continue to do that. The, the, the third, show honor for the work our nurses are doing. They have been there, as many of you have. Early in this, at the state fairgrounds, when we did vaccinations, when it was a real health concern, being out there, our nurses were there, front lines, putting needles in arms and doing amazing thing. Deb Somerville is leading a group that I, I could not be prouder of.
I would like to just associate myself with those comments from, from Mike Sartre. And we do want to thank our parents. It has been a roller coaster for all of us. They've stepped in, they did what they did, knew what was best for their child. But in addition, please acknowledge the staff and definitely our nurses who are interacting with situations, and we want to commend them in depth. Somerville, your leadership with all of them, and of course, Mike Sartre. So thank you.
We can clap on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Jones?
I'll pass in the interest of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? And then we'll wrap it up. Ms. Rowe?
I just had one question. I understand that staff have been given leave specific for COVID. And I wondered that if they don't use that leave from now to the end of the year, that's specific for COVID, and they had been asked to quarantine earlier in the school year, will that leave be allowed to be retroactively applied? So like, if they use personal leave earlier in the year? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes. Ms. Anderson, is this the last question?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, Ms. Rowe?
So my understanding is that staff and teachers have been given leave to use that specific for COVID. And my question is, they use that leave from now to the end of the year, but if they had been asked to quarantine for COVID earlier in the school year, and they don't use that COVID leave from now to the end of the year, will they be able to apply that COVID leave to the quarantine they were required earlier in the year so they can get their personal sick time back?
Okay, so what we did, we granted leave earlier in the school year if those individuals did have COVID, and we were contract tracing early on. If we were able to determine that they either had COVID or were required to quarantine from COVID due to a BCPS confirmed contact, those individuals were provided with other board business. If an employee were required to quarantine, and we did not verify that that was a BCPS contact, then that employee was required to use their personal leave. So we have been extending other board business leave to employees that did contact COVID possibly through BCPS, or that were required to quarantine possibly through a BCPS contact trace process.
Okay, so that doesn't come out of their time?
No, that did not come out of their time. They were afforded other board business.
Okay, and that continues for the rest of this year?
That is continuing for the rest of the year, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you both. And thank you all. The next item on the agenda is the Chair's Report. In the interest of time, I'm going to postpone my formal remarks and just say that I hope everyone can be kind to one another. These are tough times, and the negative energy can be used for the good of our students, who really need every adult they can get right now. And I hope that that energy can be turned into positive for their sake. So thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Student Board Members' Report, and for that I call on Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Ms. Hen. I mean, in the interest of time, I will also condense my report. I just wanted to say that the rise in COVID-19 cases brings a new wave of issues as students and staff are remaining in person with school this year. Students and staff were scared, were worried as cases began to rise, but we are also incredibly thankful for the work the system is doing to mitigate the spread and continuing to provide a safe learning environment. So just again, thank you to everyone who is helping to lead this charge and keeping our schools open and safe. And please continue to do such an incredible job. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is action taken in closed session, and for that I call on Mr. Mercedes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Earlier tonight, the board met in closed session in its quasi-judicial capacity to decide an appeal in case number HE 21-06. Now would be an appropriate time to confirm the vote taken in closed session.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the action taken in closed session on hearing examiner's case HE 2106, and authorize Ms. Gover to sign for those board members not physically present?
So moved, Mac?
Thank you, Ms. Mack. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Offerman. Any discussion? Hearing done. May I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Cossey?
Yes.
Ms. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pester?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes. Thank you.
The motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Report on the Superintendent's Proposed FY 2023 Operating Budget, and for that I call on Dr. Williams.
All right, so good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to present my proposed fiscal year 2023 operating budget to you this evening. I would like to begin with a short video highlighting our commitment to BCPS students, staff, and families.
Baltimore County leaders, the Board of Education, and members of the community have always made an investment in BCPS students and schools a priority, and there is no doubt that our community continues to receive a strong return on the investment it makes in our students. The BCPS operating budget lays out the strategies we will use to achieve our goals and matches them with the investments we need to implement the strategy. Student learning is our main priority and at the core of all of our work. We inspire learning by striving to provide the greatest public education to each and every student.
Nice job, Joshua. You found?
We have before us an opportunity to create a school system where academic success is not predictable by race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, language, or disability, where we can continue to attract and retain the very best and highly effective teachers, supporting staff members, and administrators. We stand at a crossroads. This is a critical time for our school system to leverage resources and make significant investments that will bolster our ability to provide world-class teaching and learning in a safe and supportive environment for every BCPS student. Our students are worth it. Our staff is worth it. Team BCPS is worth it. This is our time.
So I would like to thank the BCPS TV and the communication team for that inspirational video, as this slide illustrates, and go back to the slide. Our strategic plan guides our priority work and serves as the framework for fiscal year 23 budget requests. Okay, there we go. In June of 2020, I presented, and the board approved, the new strategic plan for the system called the Compass, our pathway to excellence. The strategic plan development was guided by insights we received from Team BCPS during my first 100 days as superintendent. From the various engagement efforts, five priorities emerged, forming the foundation of the strategic plan. Learning accountability results, safe and supportive environment, high-performing workforce and alignment of human capital, community engagement and partnerships, and operational excellence. As part of our continued efforts to recover and rebuild, we must collaboratively create the climate and conditions necessary for collective healing for our system. The FY 23 budget must address the impact of COVID-19 in our school communities. We know that the last 20 months have been a period of exponential change. This challenging time serves as an important reminder of how critical it is for us to strengthen our efforts to ensure high-quality teaching and learning for every student in a safe and supportive learning environment. The pandemic continues to impact our students' academic progress and social-emotional well-being. We have also seen a drop in elementary enrollment. Additionally, we are experiencing staffing shortages and challenges with retention that further impact morale. The proposed FY 2023 budget lays out a strategy to address these concerns through targeted and significant investments. We have taken several steps to keep our students safe in the classroom while offering a remote learning option to those students who cannot yet return to in-school person, personal learning. The COVID-19 pandemic has underscored the need to deepen our focus and investment in two overarching areas. One, high-quality teaching and learning, social-emotional learning, and community building, specifically, teaching and learning aligned with state and national standards. And two, equity, resources, and additional support that helps us identify and mitigate barriers to engagement. The proposed FY 2023 operating budget will provide the critical foundation BCPS needs to align its work with the blueprint for Maryland's future and ensure the success of our school system. The blueprint. The blueprint for Maryland's future establishes in law the policies and accountability recommendations of the Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education. The law took effect July 1st of 2020 and has five major policy areas: early childhood education, high-quality and diverse teachers and leaders, college and career readiness pathways, including career and technical education, more resources to ensure all students are successful, and governance and accountability. The clear alignment between the blueprint and our strategic plan presents new opportunities to reimagine public education, leverage resources, and make significant investments that will bolster our ability to provide world-class teaching and learning for every BCPS student. In the time of our perpetual change, it is vital that we remain focused on high-yield priorities that help us reach our goals. This year, we are focused on four key goals: accelerating learning, promoting social-emotional wellness, setting standards of excellence, and increasing data literacy. This laser-like focus on key areas is in direct response to the changing needs of our system. Our student population continues to grow in diversity, and we celebrate our rich and varied backgrounds. Take a look at the students we served in 1986 compared with our student population this year. We are now educating a much more diverse population. 40.4% of our students identify as African-American, 7.1% Asian, 14.0% Hispanic, and 5.2 multiracial. This significant demographic shift mirrors that seen across our state and across the nation. Since school year 1977, BCPS student demographics have shifted from a predominantly white school system to one that demonstrates considerable diversity. While mobility rates have improved from 10 years ago, they persist. Currently, one out of every five children is moving within the system. During the pandemic, we saw a significant spike in FY 2020, followed a steep decline in FY 2021. The FY 23 budget proposal takes into consideration the need to respond to demographic and mobility trends. In the midst of ongoing change, the spotlight remains on our BCPS students. Our students are counting on all of us to work in tandem to meet their dynamic and unique needs. While our student population only grew slightly this year, the needs of our students are increasing. We have a rapidly growing second-language population and an increase in students who are eligible for free and reduced-price meals. As of September 30th, our enrollment was 111,120 students, with 53.9% of our students eligible for free and reduced-price meals. We have seen a 44% increase in the number of students eligible for free and reduced-price meals over the past decade. Our English-language learners have grown by 205% overall, and by 17% in the past year. The number of homeless children increased by 20.6% over the past 12 years. Our farms rate took a steep increase last year. Our farms rate took a steep increase last year, likely related to pandemic-associated economic disruptions. The BCPS graduation rate of 88.5% for the class of 2020 exceeds the Maryland State average of 86.8%. Class of 2021 data will be available from MSDE in the next few months. While we celebrate the achievements of our students, we know we have more work to do to ensure our students are college and career-ready. Although we have seen improvement in our overall graduation rate, we know that significant gaps between student groups still remain. Our data confirms that some students need more time to develop a positive trajectory and graduate. I believe this extra time can help prepare our students to access post-secondary career and college options. Dropout rates for the class of 2020 went from 8.8% the previous year to 8.3%. Yes, we will continue to identify root causes for our student groups and strive to lessen these rates. I believe targeting students as early as middle school and developing a six-year plan with access and opportunities can help improve dropout rates. Our students receiving special ed services saw a rapid growth from FY 2015 to FY 2020. Although those populations have declined along with overall enrollment, needs still exceed resources. Our population of English-language learners has increased by 205% since FY 2010 and 16.6% in the past year. We will continue to provide the necessary resources and supports for our English-language learners to ensure equitable access to all programming. Our enrollment losses are concentrated with our youngest learners, who last year were challenged by the most by remote learning. Enrollment is projected to bounce back to pre-pandemic positive-growth trends. So, the proposed budget focuses on two key areas of our school system: people and progress. It is centered on our core purpose of increasing achievement for all students and a variety of pathways to prepare students for college and careers. We are addressing learning acceleration through high-quality teaching and learning, social-emotional learning, and community building. This budget proposes increasing compensation to address vacancies. It responsibly identifies $7.7 million in cost reductions and includes a proposed increase of 356.3 FTEs and $178.4 million. Additionally, the proposal includes specific requests in the following areas: special education, English-language learners, and additional staff, magnet support and school-per-pupil allocation or school-budget increases, emotional support staff, and critical maintenance and transportation. Through the COVID-related grants of $395.6 million received primarily via the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or ESER, we have been able to fund critical initiatives, BCPS, that could not have otherwise afforded. These initiatives include classroom support, extended day, summer school, tutoring, special ed, and a virtual learning program, or known as VLP. In alignment with the efficiency review, this budget proposal includes responsible cost reductions in the amount of $7.7 million. These savings include a reduction of 9.0 FTEs totaling $1.7 million through the reorganization of cabinet and $6.0 million through device cost reductions. So the focus areas. The FY 2023 proposed budget is closely aligned to the BCPS strategic plan. Significant proposals are geared towards our goal of raising the bar, closing gaps, and preparing for our future. To accelerate learning across the pandemic-driven learning loss, I am proposing a variety of targeted initiatives under learning accountability and results. The budget includes 210.5 special ed positions, including elementary IEP chairs, teachers, parent educators, and related services; 44 ESOL positions; 34.3 positions required for the new Northeast Elementary School; $400,000 for Red House Run startup expense and moving costs for the new school; 8.5 FTEs and $1.5 million to support expanded magnet programs previously supported by a grant. As mentioned earlier, reduced contracts and conversions of high school students to Chromebooks will result in a savings of $6 million. In addition, 12 assistant principals and support staff; 1.0 FTE for the Watershed Charter School, a 5% increase in school-per-pupil funding of $600,000, and 22 staff development teachers for elementary schools. Now, we can clap if you think that's a good idea. All right. Safe and supportive environment. BCPS is taking a comprehensive approach in addressing the social-emotional well-being of our students, and the FY 23 proposed budget reflects that. Significant resources are proposed to support students impacted emotionally by the pandemic, including 33 school counselors, 22 health assistants, and two health supervisors, 1.0 fiscal assistant for psychological services, 10 social workers, and 1.0 social worker supervisor. This budget addresses critical staffing, hiring, and retention issues through increased targeted compensation. So, this budget includes $18.1 million for salary steps, $52.1 million for cost-of-living adjustments, $28.5 million for employee incentives and wage-scale restructuring, $1.3 million to cover mandatory minimum wage increases, $3.4 million for extended-day support, long-term subs, and lunchroom assistance. Positions such as double A's, lunchroom assistants, or kindergarten assistants will see their hourly wages increase to $14 an hour under this proposal; $2.9 million to increase substitute and temporary employee wages above minimum wage; $200,000 to provide step equivalent increases for executive directors-in-chief, and $100,000 to adjust the central office budget wage scale. Oh, I'm not done yet. $3.4 million to contract with Kelly Services to manage the substitute placement and hiring process; $600,000 for increases in national board certification associated with the blueprint legislation; a transfer of 24.0 blueprint-funded positions to special revenue; benefit increases for new and existing employees of $16.8 million. As previously noted, the reorganization of my cabinet will yield a net reduction of nine positions and $1.7 million. Now, we can clap. That's a big one. We also must invest in our critical infrastructure needs. This budget does that. Transportation replacement vehicles for $300,000; 3.0 FTEs for facility construction build-to-learn staffing; increase current bus contractor fees by $2.0 million; nine FTEs and $3.8 million for preventative maintenance personnel and contracts; contract maintenance, housekeeping, and ground services for $6.7 million; 1.0 facilities, school support specialists; $300,000 for energy management software. Next slide. $900,000 for air purifier filters; $1.5 million for information technology security software; $4.9 million for technology support contractors to support student devices; $2.7 million for classroom display panels; $400,000 for transportation vehicle lifts; $100,000 for transportation safety vans; $800,000 for school flooring; $500,000 for construction document management; and $900,000 to cover utility cost inflation. You can see here a summary of all the initiatives in the proposed budget. The grand total of new initiatives include 381.3 positions and $172.4 million. So my request for FY 23 is very significant, but we must address our critical needs. The general fund budget, which contains majority of the day-to-day spending for schools and offices, including most salaries, is proposed at $1.86 billion for FY 2023, which is $178.4 million above FY 2022 and 20.9% above required local maintenance of effort, or MOE. The BCPS FY 23 proposed budget for all funds, including general fund, special revenue or grant fund, capital project fund, debt service, and enterprise food services fund, totals $2.43 billion, which is an increase of $115 million versus FY 22. So, upcoming FY 23 budget meetings include public hearing on January 18, board work session on January 25, and the board vote to adopt the FY 2023 budget on February 8. This concludes my presentation of the proposed FY 23 operating budget.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Board members, questions related to the proposed FY 2023 operating budget are due to Dr. Williams by the close of business on Tuesday, January 18, for preparation of the work session on January 25, 2022. Following the work session, the second round of questions for the proposed FY 2023 operating budget are due to Dr. Williams by the close of business on Tuesday, February 1, 2022. The board is scheduled to vote on the budget on February 8, 2022. Okay. Yes, Dr. Hager?
Could you specify how the public hearing will work next week? Is it public comments at the time?
The public input hearing on the budget is next Tuesday, January 18. It's a virtual session.
And people can sign up?
And they can sign up online, following our normal process.
I just wanted to know if you could say how that could happen?
Yes. On...
It's on...
Board docs under announcements. And there is a link for public signup. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Mack?
Is there any limit to the number of people who would be able to testify on the budget next week?
There is no limit to the number that can testify, as is customary for the public input on the budget.
Is it the three-minute time limit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is contract awards, and for that I call on Ms. Jones, Chair of the Building and Contracts Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Hen. Members of the Board, the Board's Building and Contracts Committee met Monday, January 10, 2022. Items L-2 through L-23 are being forwarded to the full board for approval. Item L-1 is being forwarded to the board without a recommendation from the committee.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Do I have a motion to approve items L-2 through L-23?
So moved. Scott.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. No second is needed since the recommendation comes from the committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Pester?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Is there any discussion on item L-1? Questions or discussion?
Ms. Hen, yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Thomas?
Yes, thank you. Why wasn't this moved forward with a recommendation from the committee? And I guess I'd be asked of Ms. Jones.
Ms. Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. The committee did not approve it. We had two absentee committee members, and we only got two votes to approve it and sent it to the board. So it comes to the board for discussion, and I actually, at this point, would like to move item L-1 for approval from the full board.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. No second is needed since it comes from...
Actually, we do need a second.
I'm sorry, we do need a second. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Offerman.
Second, Pastor.
And Mr. McMillian raised his hand, so thank you all for the second. That would be Mr. McMillian for the second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Is that Ms. Pester?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead, Ms. Pester.
I don't...I didn't look at the contracts meeting, so I have no idea what the discussion or the problem was, or if it was just people there. But I need to say that with all of the questions and concerns about behavior and school, the issues with our students, that we understand that social-emotional needs didn't just happen with the pandemic. If you look at our policies, you'll see that a previous board created a number of restorative practices, many of which teeter on the brink of not being restorative practices, for real, but school-to-prison pipeline behaviors, if we really did them. We need to train our teachers and administrators. They need this. They need that kind of service, the training, the implementation, so that we, now more than ever, are able to work with our students. Anyone who has ever worked in a school knows that it's not just about being warm and fuzzy and "Oh, Johnny" and "Oh, Susie." You have to know what the right words are, what the right behaviors are. Our staff members need to know what kinds of things we say that will trigger certain behaviors. Again, I didn't watch, so I don't know what the discussion was, but I did read the contract, and anything that is going to give our staff the kind of training and support so that they can really, really reach out and be integral part of what our students are doing and feeling and need to become is critical. So I'll be interested in hearing what some of the negatives were.
Thank you, Ms. Pester. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Thank you, Ms. Hen. And Ms. Pester, thank you. You explained that so eloquently as only an educator could. With full disclosure, I actually did a lot of research into this contract, since this is not my wheelhouse, and I have to say that I have questions for staff. Number one, how important this contract, and is it part of a federal mandated policy? Or would we lose funding? So that question's to Mrs. Saris or any staff that can answer. And I do have a follow-up question.
So I'm gonna ask Ms. Mustafa, I see her in the audience, Dr. Zarchin, and Mr. Saris to come forward. The funding source for this is a grant, and I think if Mr. Saris can just speak to the grant and then anything Ms. Mustafa or Dr. Zarchin would like to add, greatly appreciate.
Yes. The primary focus, the primary funding for this program is part of our Title IV grant, which is oriented towards safe and healthy students. And so that application featured this program. If it's not approved, we would need to... If it's not approved, we would need to amend that grant application, try and allocate those dollars in some other manner, with the hope that a USDOE and MSD would approve those. But I would also add that these services are available to individual schools, so many of those take advantage of them. And I think the largest percentage of schools which use their own Title I funds for the same services are an important factor here. So, and even Title II teacher education grant can be used with this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Saris. Ms. Mustafa, Dr. Zarchin, anything to add?
Well, I'd first like to thank Ms. Pester for her comments. I think that was an excellent overview of the importance of the work. The contract really supports training of staff, a trainer-of-trainer model. I'll let Ms. Mustafa share details, but that's the focus. A lot of the work is in the summer, and over the past, I think since 2017, 2,500 staff members have benefited from similar training.
Thank you. The restorative practices, what we're pursuing is professional learning complemented by the materials that are required to support training, as well as reference when staff are in schools or working directly with students. So in late 2017, yes, we did use funding to fund actually moving forward with establishing training. And at that time, we saw the opportunity to develop a cadre of trainers in Baltimore County. So actually, we built the infrastructure with respect to having trainers and have a train-the-trainer model to actually train other staff across Baltimore County. And so in doing so, that allows for not only our central office team to train, but it also allows us to expand that to members of the BCPS community to train outside and into the schoolhouse. And what I want to offer is that many times when we think about restorative practices, we're think about training just on formal conferencing, when something's gone wrong or something we have harmed that's been done. Actually, restorative practices is a continuum of practices. And I loved what Ms. Pester said, in that she said, "It's about using language. It's about effectively questioning when we engage our students or other individuals," and how we approach those situations. But it's also those impromptu conversations, how we structure those conversations to be optimal. What language do we use? And then, how do we circle up and create community? And that's really the premise of restorative practices. It is about creating community, relationships where we are a community, we problem-solve in our community, but we benefit from the strengths of the community as well. So just offering that that's the vision behind it.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Yes, thank you for that. And I just wanted to understand, this contract, I wanted to understand, is it federally mandated? It sounded like, from what I heard, that it is.
Well, it's part of our proposal under the Title IV grant, but I guess it's obvious, but I'll say it anyway, that safe and healthy environments are part of our compass. So I think it goes to the core of what the board has set as our plan forward.
Thank you. And then my second question is, how does it fit into our equity lens? I know I've placed the Equity Committee, we've placed the Equity Lens checklist in front of all board members' desk, and so I just want to know how it fits into our equity lens and making sure that we are equitable across BCPS.
So one of the things that this works on is ensuring that all students have a voice. That is a big part of our equity work. It's social skills, making sure that folks have models for problem-solving, models for empathizing with others. So it's very closely aligned with the equity work. And I don't know that you can separate the restorative practices from our SEL work, from the equity work. They all run together, and it's important that we bring them together, and it's a part of what we do as a school system.
Thank you for that. And I guess my last question would actually be to the Building and Contracts Committee. What was the reason why this one, I guess, contract was not approved? Was there conversation? And I apologize, I didn't listen to the meeting. Were there dissenting votes? I guess that would be to the current chair of that committee.
We didn't have enough votes, Ms. Scott, to approve it, but I'm glad that this has come to the full board, because this is such important work, and this is not my wheelhouse. I have looked into it. And I know Dr. McComas thinks I don't listen to her, but I've heard her use restorative practices a lot, Dr. McComas, so I do listen to you, and thank you, Ms. Mustafa, as well. You always talk about meeting our students where they are, and where they are is in crisis. So this is a very important contract, and I'm glad that it actually came to the board so we were more educated about it. So thank you, everybody, that Dr. Williams, Dr. Zarchin, Mrs. Saris, Ms. Mustafa, and Dr. McComas, and Ms. Pester.
Okay.
And Ms. Joz, could you break down the votes, please?
That's public record, and Mr. McMillian has his hand up to ask a question. So, Ms. Joz?
Yeah, but I asked a question of the chair. Could you break down the votes, please, Ms. Joz?
Ms. Hen, is it okay?
That's public record, and those are reflected in the committee minutes, so I believe it's out of order. And Ms. Scott, we need to move on to other committee or other board member questions at this point. So if you have questions of the staff who are here to answer questions on this contract, those do not pertain to the contract being discussed at hand.
Yes. Staff, could you break down the dissenting votes in regards to the contract, please?
Excuse me. Mr. Mercedes, is that germane to the discussion at hand?
Uh, no.
Okay. Legal says that's not germane, so I'm ruling that out of order. Mr. McMillian, your question?
Yep. Dr. Zarchin, would you agree that this is one tool in the disciplinary toolbox?
Yes.
And it's been my experience, and I just want you to counter this, anybody in the crowd can, I don't care. It's been my experience that street tough kids will tell you what you want to hear so that they can get out of your little meeting and go about their business. How do you respond to that?
That's where the training comes in, truly. It's working so you know students, and you can break through a facade of toughness or resistance, whatever it may be. That's why the training is so important.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members who haven't had a chance to speak yet, Ms. Rowe?
So I just want to say, I support restorative practices. The General Assembly had a commission that did a lot of work. I forwarded that document to the other board members. I wouldn't have really thought this would be controversial. And one of the first tours that I had, when I first got on the board, was to Halsted Academy, where they demonstrated how restorative practices work. And I really have to honestly say, I wish that was the way we did things when I was a kid in school. Because essentially, the way that it works is that instead of just, you did this, you get this punishment, there's in-depth conversations about, well, why did you do that? And separating kids to get them to each think about it on their own, then maybe getting them to talk to each other. And the time it takes to actually work through teaching kids the consequences for their actions, but also how to repair relationships once damage has been done, I just don't think that in today's world, we can omit that from education and say that we've educated anyone. Because children need to learn this, and if they're not learning it anywhere else, they should learn it in school.
Ms. Causey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that this contract was discussed by the full board, and sometimes that's why we, things happen, so that we do have these full discussions. I appreciate my board members' questions and staff and all the answers. So I don't really have a question, I just wanted to say thank you for all of that explanation. I also wanted to thank Mr. Billy Burke from Case for informing us that he supports this. As the executive director of Case that has its members, principals, assistant principals, who have to deal with the students and the teachers, and the interaction between staff and employees, and between employees and employees, it's very helpful to know that this is an important part of the tools, as Mr. McMillian said, that they use to help our students. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Causey. Ms. Mack?
Yes. Dr. Zarchin, do we measure the efficacy of this program in any way, and if so, how? And what does the data show us?
We have, and I'm gonna let Ms. Mustafa speak to that. Thank you for that question.
Sure.
So when we started training individuals across BCPS, we did look at pre- and post-assessment. So we looked at initially how it was being applied, and really it wasn't being applied. And so then we started most recently looking at what's the responsiveness and use, either be it monthly, weekly, or daily. And I will offer to you that we got that data, but what I will also offer to you is that restorative practices, as one element of social-emotional learning, is embedded across our social-emotional learning. When you talk about conscious discipline, if you go into a classroom in the morning, you'll see students circling up. That's part of the restorative practices continuum. You will hear language that's used, effective language, in how we speak, how we notice what folks are doing versus pointing out the negative aspects of their behavior. That is part of the restorative practices continuum. So having said that, when we looked at, and we looked at the data and the implementation and how that did range, we looked at, it is being used either monthly, weekly, or daily at a rate of 63% of those folks that we did train. And again, there are individuals participating in practice that we may not have trained. These are the folks that we've trained from the central office lens. Some schools did independent training, so capturing that is not here. Using effective questions is, those folks are using it at a rate of a little over 89%. And effective statements are being used at a little bit over 90. It's 90.3%. And impromptu conversations are one of our highest areas, which is simply having a conversation using that effective language at 93%. So we do see that this is occurring, and we're continuing to look at measures to be able to measure that.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Hager.
Thank you. I am a big fan of this approach. My only question is really specifically about the contract. So there were six bidders, and the contract is for about $70,000 a year, and it says it will be awarded to all six. So how does that work?
Correct. So we have proposals based on established rates, and we have the ability to start with the lowest-cost option and hope that that meets with our scheduling needs. If we can't schedule it appropriately, we move to the next highest provider and so forth. So we have six different providers here with different rates, three of which are, we're also in the most recent prior competitively bid contract.
Okay.
So three are new, and three are existing.
So they're not all splitting the $70,000? It's gonna go...
No.
Okay, that was, seemed a little confusing to me.
And it's a price per day for the training, typically. Yeah.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. So I appreciate Ms. Mack's question, as it speaks to, one, the discussion that was held in committee, which was about the measurement of this program. And she and I are thinking along the same vein in terms of looking at the outcomes, and how do we measure the impact of our, and the return on our investment? It's a very business-y thing to say, but we know that there's an opportunity cost, and we want to make sure that we are spending taxpayers' dollars wisely and are maximizing the effect on our school climate, because that's a concern of many. And we want to make sure that we are, you know, doing the absolute best, investing in the very best programs that we can to improve that. And these past two years have been hard. We know that the social-emotional needs have never been higher of our students, and we want to make sure that we are spending in the very best areas possible, whether it's human capital, whatever that looks like. So that was the one concern that I had raised in committee. I appreciate the responses. I appreciate Mr. Burke speaking tonight on behalf of Case, and all of our educators, Ms. Pester, and everyone speaking in favor of this. So certainly, it's no criticism of the program itself, but rather, are we being selective in where we spend our dollars, because we know that we need to be? So that's why it was a concerning committee, and this is a very helpful discussion. I agree with Ms. Causey. This is why we have these discussions as a full board, so that we can hear from multiple perspectives. So I just wanted to share that, and thank you for the additional information. Mr. McMillian?
Yeah, this question is for Dr. Williams. If this contract passes, can I go through the training? And if you allow me to go through the training, I'll come back and report to the board about the training.
So, sure, but...
Skip me.
I think it's doable. We just have to look at the process and how many staff we want to. So I hear what you're saying. I think that might be good for a board member to participate in restorative practices. And if you think about the title, and if you ever operated a school and had to deal with situations, you want to restore the environment for learning and for a positive climate. So if you think about the title in itself, it makes sense, right? Because situations happen in a workplace, in a school building, you have to address it, but then how do you bring those individuals back into the environment? And these are the tools and resources available. So we'll sign up, we'll add Mr. McMillian on the list.
Thank you. Ms. Joz?
I believe Ms. Pester was before me.
Okay, you were first in the chat, but if you'd like, Ms. Pester to go next? Ms. Pester, I'm told you're out of time.
Okay, thank you. I want to be signed up, too. Mr. McMillian, you will love it, as many conversations as we've had, this is the kind of thing that will reach those children that we always talk about, trust me.
Thank you. Ms. Joz?
Yes, thank you. Actually, Mr. McMillian raised a good point, and Dr. Williams, if it is open to board members, I would love to sign up and educate myself as well.
Board members, we need this contract to be passed before we sign up anybody.
Any further discussion, board members?
Hearing done. We have a motion on the floor. May I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joz?
Yes.
Ms. Pester?
Absolutely.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yeah.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mustafa, Dr. Zarchin, Mr. Saris.
The next item on the agenda is the work session on the fiscal year 2023 county capital budget request, and for that I call on Mr. Dixon. And friends, good evening.
So, good evening, Chair Hen, Vice Chair Pester, Dr. Williams, and members of the board. So as you'll recall, in the meeting of December 21st, 2021, we introduced the county's capital program for fiscal '23. We had made a brief presentation to you to go over that. I wouldn't do it again, but I'll summarize what we said in that. So there were two projects that were removed from the list, from the previous year's list. That was Northeast Area Elementary School at Ridge Road and Red House Run Elementary School, because they were funded under the capital program. Built-to-Learn funds were used for Bedford Elementary School... Built-to-Learn funds were used for Bedford Elementary School, Summit Park Elementary School, Northeast Area Middle School, and Pine Grove Middle School. So, those projects have been removed from last year's list. The changes that were made to this year's program was an addition of $5.4 million, and I'm rounding the figures. If you look in your spreadsheet, it is the second blue column from the extreme right. So, that will show you the amounts that have been added. And remember, it's county's capital program, so these are county's capital funds. So, $5.4 million for Scotts Branch Elementary School, because we have changed it from renovation addition to replacement as a result of the feasibility study. There is a request for $13.5 million for an addition at Dundalk High School. $5 million for a design for Northeast Area School. That study is still being done. It has just recently been initiated. $5 million for Southeast Area Design. Both of them are recommendations under my I-Pass. And there are two design requests that have been added. One for $9 million for Towson High School, and the other for $10 million for Delaney High School design. At this time, the scope of work is not available, but we hope that by the time we get that money, that the picture will be clear and we will be able to find out as to where the design will go. In addition to that, there's a $500,000 added for Northwest Center for Technical Education. It is one of the recommendations under the my I-Pass, and it has been discussed here by community members in the past. So, we had asked for questions to be forwarded to us, and there are three questions that we have received, and I'll go over that. One of the questions is that we have requested, we had requested $15 million for Langston High School for planning and design, and why are planning dollars less for Towson and Delaney? The response is that right now, we do not know the scope of work as much as we did about the Langston when we requested. And also, at the time we made request for Langston, state was not participating in design. Now, state is. So, by the time it's all done, the total design cost should be comparable. And Langston, in case of Langston, we do not plan to spend on $15 million. More than likely, it's going to be less than that. And for Towson and Delaney, after the scope of work is determined, we believe that the design cost will be very similar to what we will have for Langston. And also, I'd like to reiterate that if there are any changes, if additional funds are needed in any case, we have the support of county executives, finance, budget and finance team. They have always cooperated with us in providing funds for that, and we don't expect anything different this time. The second question had to do with farms percentage in the sixth column. So, the first statement I have is these percentages do not impact priority. They have no other relevance other than information item. In one of the meetings in the past, board requested that we include that, so we include that, but it has no other relevance other than an information item. The numbers that have been used are the FY '23 state budget documents, and they are based on the October 31st, 2019 enrollment and low income counts published by the MSD's School and Community Nutrition Program. The BCPS school profile dashboard contains farms percentages from September 30th enrollment file. So, it's the difference in the date and source. So, it's, that's what you are seeing. The final question that came to us is that why were delays in submission of FY 2022 capital program last year? And that question is not relevant because there were no delays. So, I don't know the rationale for the question. All of our information to state last year, and this year has been submitted on time. And if there is any additional time needed, we request state for additional time, give them the rationale, and in most of the cases, we get additional time. But the question, I don't know why was asked because there were no delays from our records. So, those were the questions that we received. If there are any other questions that you have now, we'll do our best to answer those questions. If we don't have answers, we'll get back to you. And with that, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Dixitt. Mr. McMillian, and then Ms. Rowe.
Mr. Dixitt, has a vendor been chosen for the Southeast Area overcrowding analysis?
Yes. The vendor has been chosen. We followed the...
I'm sorry, I missed that. What did you say?
Yes. The vendor has been chosen. We followed the same process that we have used in the past, and it is a board mandated process.
And the Baltimore County Government's paying for that, right? That $500,000?
That's correct.
And when can we expect, when can the community expect that analysis to begin?
So, we have started the process in last month or so, and they are still in the early stages of that. As part of the scope of work, there'll be at least two community sessions for community engagement and their opinion, and it'll be scheduled very soon.
Thank you.
We don't have the dates right now, but the community engagement will be very similar to what you saw in the preparation of my I-Pass. That's our goal.
Can you share the name of the company now, or no?
I don't know. Do you have the name of the company?
For the Southeast Area, it is JMT.
JMT Corporation. They are big...
Thank you.
Big company that have done a lot of work for us with exceptional qualification, and they are familiar with the area.
Thank you. Ms. Rowe, and then Ms. Mack.
Yeah. So, I just want to say, Mr. Dixitt, I'm very happy to see all of these routine maintenance projects down here and that we're no longer using the bulk allocation method to where we can't see what the projects are. So, I think this is really great. The question I have is for the Northwest Area CTE School. It says replace our study for renovation or addition. What school were you planning to do the renovation or addition to?
So, that's a very good question. Thank you for asking that. Just like we are doing for Northeast and Southeast Area High Schools, we are going to hire an independent consultant to help us. Number one, working with Dr. McComas's team to find out what are the CTE programs that are needed, because there, I understand there is concern about equity of access to CTE program. So, we have to work on what programs are needed in there, and if there are any other programs that should be considered, what is the space requirement for those programs? And if we can fit in any of the existing schools, or it is better to meet our goals by either leasing a facility, buying a facility, or doing something like we did for Rosedale Center program? All of that will be studied by independent consultant. Again, there'll be community interaction. We'll be meeting with the community folks. We are going to get a lot of help from Dr. McComas's team to find out exactly what's the path that we have to take. So, there's some work required over the period of next six to nine months, and that's what we are going to be doing. So, these three studies, the Southeast, the Northeast, and the CTE program, that's going to take some time, and when we are at a point, we'll share information with the board, we'll come here and share with you.
Okay. So, it sounds like this is basically the preliminary. You know you want to do a CTE program, and now you're just trying to figure out how, where?
Yes. And what programs, and how to put those programs, what kind of spaces are needed? What kind of equipment is going to be needed? So, it is similar to educational respect that we prepare for a new school, but it is a little bit more because we also has to find out what educational respect we are preparing.
Okay. So, you don't even know what building yet, is basically what it is?
No, we don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mack?
Mr. Dixitt, I just wanted to set the record straight. When I looked at the, all three questions under my name, I thought, and you said to me, I don't know what the third question. I wanted to say to you, I don't either, because I didn't ask that question.
So, thank you very much.
So, I just wanted to clarify. I asked the first two, but I didn't ask the third one.
So, because once you, anybody asks the questions, it's part of the record. So, I think we owe it to everybody to let them know that this question is not relevant because, because, you know...
Right. But it's under my name, and when I looked at it, I thought, that doesn't matter, but I don't think I asked it anyway.
Well, we'll correct that, Ms. Mack, if that's the case. Thank you for letting us know.
Ms. Pasteur?
Okay. I just want to, Mr. Dixitt, and maybe Dr. McComas and Dr. Williams, clarify, we spent over a year under Mr. Handy with college folks, business people, people in various fields, identifying several programs that, where students could get their certificates before leaving high school, where they could go on to real college coming out of this. So, I hope that we are going to use that information, so we're not going to start off over again, because that's time that we have already spent. We've been working on this for years. But about three years ago, we actually did that kind of work. So, I hope we're going to just start with seeing whether those courses are still as relevant as they were then. But we brought in for a year groups of people to have this discussion. Just wanted to point that out.
So, Ms. Pasteur, thank you very much for asking that question because of the...
Mr. Dixitt, let me, let me just, it really wasn't a question, but maybe it was. I just wanted to respond by saying, yes, Ms. Pasteur.
Yes.
This is not an opportunity to reinvent the wheel, I think, to what was shared by Mr. Dixitt. Ms., Dr. Boswell, McComas and team did some extensive work. We have that information. We just need to update that work and have those conversations with Mr. Dixitt and his team.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Kuhn?
Thank you, Ms. Hen. Mr. Dixitt, thank you for providing your answers, and I'm looking at the previous presentation you shared in December, and it was, it was well done, and you highlighted exactly what was changing, and I really appreciate that. The only question I really have for you is, so, we're now down to, I think it's Project 15, the Northwest Area CTE School, and that's the last new or replacement school. And then everything else is some kind of maintenance activity. And as I've been on the board over the years, this list has fluctuated, where there's a lot of building, a lot of maintenance. It kind of grows and changes. My question is, when do we add the next new schools to be built? And when will that happen?
So, thank you very much, and good evening to you again. The, the list will be updated in the next session when we come to you for state's plan in August, September. And also, in addition to that, I wanted to share that superintendent's team is working with the county executives team to explore the possibility of getting additional funds above and beyond what state has approved. And should that happen, we'll create a list of systemic projects and share that with you when the time is there. So, there are three different initiatives going on. That is the Northeast Area, the Southeast Area, and then the CTE, and the list of systemics that have been recommended by my I-Pass. All of that you'll be seeing next time we come to the board, or some of it, next time we come to the board in August, September.
And just to be clear, Mr. Dixitt, that list may start in August, but we won't be making decisions or voting on it until this January timeframe of '23. So, this is the last list that this board as a unit is actually going to be voting on. Is that accurate?
Yeah. This is for the funding of the projects, and there's a lot of work to be done after the funds are received. And this is continuously updated. Our guiding document is my I-Pass that has been shared with the board.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhn. Other discussion, board members? Mrs. Causey?
Thank you, and good evening. Attached to board docs, there's a presentation, but is it in the interest of time? You're not showing it within the meeting.
So, the presentation was...
The one from last time?
Mrs. Causey, it was presented last time.
Thank you. Related to the priority order currently, you have, the spreadsheet shows that the studies for the, are currently above the Towson and Delaney High School projects? And how will that impact requests for funding and their priority and completion?
So, this priority was approved by the board, and in my mind, the priority is what is approved by the board. Also, we are, the, the projects below that, which is the Towson, Delaney, and New Area CTE School, they are still under the review by fiscal partners. So, we hope to get more information in near future. And based on that information, we'll again make recommendation to the board. All of the recommendations are presented to board and approved by the board before we can do anything.
So, are you saying that by those studies being above Towson High School and Delaney High School, that may result in Towson and Delaney High School having other schools stay above them?
I don't have the answer to that because I don't have all of the information. Okay? I don't have the results of Northeast Area Study. I don't have the results of Southeast Area Study. The funding for Towson and Delaney is still being reviewed by state and county fiscal partners. So, the question that you are asking, I don't have all of that information to answer that question.
Thank you. And I appreciate that so many of the requests were fulfilled by the healthy schools, facility funding, systemic projects. The question is currently Built-to-Learn does not cover systemic projects?
That's our understanding. That's right.
But it does cover the planning, as you mentioned?
Yes.
And was there approval for planning, state planning, funding for any of these projects?
So, for the priority one through six, the answer is yes. We are, and help me with this question if I'm wrong, one through six, they will participate in the state's planning effort. My understanding is that Langston High School, which is five and six, we are going to resubmit to get whatever state funds we can get. So, we'll get that. Beyond that, we haven't applied for any of the design funds.
Didn't the board request that you apply for design funds for some of these projects, including Towson and Delaney and...
So, Towson, this is the first time we are requesting design funds from the county, and in the next submission, you'll find that you, this, the process is that the design funds, and help me with that answer, they are part of our state allocation. So, when we go for the state allocation, design and FF and E... So when we go for the state allocation, design and FF and E is all part of that request. So they come to us, but slightly in a different manner. So Lansdowne is a good example. And that we'll get design funds, but they'll be part of the construction, state share. That's where you will see in the next time when we come to you for state submission.
Thank you. And then how can communities know when school major maintenance and/or improvements are planned within the list of needs countywide? So for instance, Hareford High School, I know, has been communicating with staff about their track repairs and tennis courts or, or replacement. Delaney Track, excuse me, they still have no turf field and other projects from other schools. So how, how do communities know that?
So anything that is beyond this list is included in the, in the county's capital program. And they have increased the amount in the recent past. And our teams work with the school administration to share when the projects are ready to be started. In case of Hareford, we have been in communication with the principal and inform him of when the process is going to be scheduled. These days, as you know, because of all of the supply chain issues, our estimate for construction time, they are not as precise as they used to be in the past. So we are careful about sharing any timeline with anybody.
I'm out of time.
Thank you.
I don't have to ask more, but thank you.
Ms. Joes?
Thank you, Mr. Hen. Mr. Dixon, when you are requesting for design dollars, just off the bat, you need to know what you're designing. What kind of dollars are you requesting for Towson?
So that's one of the issue, Ms. Joes. Good evening to you, and nice to hear your voice. At this time, that is one of the issue. We still don't know what our funding partners will approve for design. And once we have that idea, we'll be in a better position to ask for construction and design funds. But I'm thankful to county executive for, and his team, for at least considering this, this part of the design fee that's included here. It, it gives us a chance to start the design process, at least for the school that has historical issues. And we have, it's, it's a lot longer design process. So that will help us with that.
And as a follow-up question, you know, I always hear about Delaney-Towson, but it's another school in District Three, Lock Raven High School. And I see there's a roof replacement placed for that. Was that part, part of the multi-year improvement plan that was scheduled? And what are the major improvements are planned for Lock Raven High School, which is in District Three?
So that, that's another good question. What we hope that when the Northeast area study will be done for the high schools, Lock Raven will be part of that study. And if there is no result for Lock Raven as a result of that study, then there are items included in my IPASS. And in future request, you might see a lot of those items that are included in my pass list, my IPASS list.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dixon. I know you're doing a great job, and thank you for everything you do. Have a good night.
Thank you very much for your compliment.
Thank you, Ms. Joes. Any other discussion board members? No? Well, thank you.
So thank you very much. And next time, we'll come and request your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon, Mr. Plaid, and Dr. Wheatley Phillips.
Yes, thank you all.
Yeah, I forgot to introduce my team. Everybody knows Dr. Wheatley Phillips and Mr. Merrill Plaid. Him and his team have done an outstanding job in our capital improvement program. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business, consideration of board policies. And for that, I call on the Policy Review Committee Chair, Ms. Rowe.
Members of the Board, the Policy Review Committee asks that the Board accept the committee's recommendation to amend the following board policies. Policy 4006 Personnel: General Medical Evaluations. Policy 4202 Personnel Compensation Benefits and Retirement. Policy 5100 Enrollment and Attendance: Compulsory Attendance. And Madam Chair, I had a request for a board member to pull out Policy 5100 Enrollment and Attendance and vote on that separately from the other two.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. And Ms. Mack, do you have a comment or question?
I have a motion to make. Is it appropriate to do that now?
Is your-
On 5100, I mean, 5100.
Okay, so let, I will separate 5100 out. Let's process the other two first, if that's okay with you. Do I have a motion to adopt the recommendation of the Board's Policy Review Committee for Policy 4006 and 4202?
I move, Dr. Offerman.
Thank you, Mr. Offerman. No second is needed, since the recommendation comes from the committee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joes? Ms. Joes? Ms. Pasteur?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yeah.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. Thank you. We'll now process Policy 5100. Do I have a motion to accept the, so there's no recommendation for 5100, Ms. Rowe?
There is a recommendation. I believe it did pass PRC.
It did pass PRC, thank you.
Yes, but it was asked that, a board member asked that we pull it out and vote separately.
Okay. We will process this. Ms. Mack, you would like to make a separate motion?
I would.
Following the processing of this motion? Or do you wish to make your motion?
I would like to send this back to PRC, so however you-
Go ahead and, go ahead and make your motion.
I move that Policy 5100 Enrollment and Attendance: Compulsory Attendance be returned to the next PRC meeting for continued review in conjunction with Policy 5120, which is Students' Enrollment and Attendance: Attendance and Excuses.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's, give the second?
I'll second, Hager.
Thank you, Dr. Hager. Is there any discussion?
May I speak to my motion?
Yes, Ms. Mack, go ahead.
We talked about it quite a bit tonight. And given the conversations that we continue to have between attendance and academic achievement, I think it's important for the board to review both Policies 5100 and 5120 with an emphasis on promoting attendance and defining ambiguous terms like regularly attending school.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mack. Any other discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote, please? Okay, Ms. Mack, can you send the motion to Ms. Cover, please? Yes, and could you restate it as well, please?
Yes, hold on. I move that Policy 5100 Enrollment and Attendance- dash compulsory attendance be returned to the next PRC meeting for continued review in conjunction with Policy 5120, which is Students: enrollment and attendance dash attendance and excuses.
Thank you. Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joes? Ms. Pasteur?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
I'm staying.
Ms. Scott?
She signed off?
She did.
Yeah, she signed, Hager.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Rowe.
Could I just ask board members to email me guidance on that Policy 5100? And specifically, what terms they would like to see defined in PRC? That would be very helpful to the committee. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Rowe. The next item on the agenda is board member comments and consideration of agenda items for future board, for future board meetings. Board members, please note that items provided at past meetings have been received and are being reviewed. So we'll go around. Ms. Rowe?
I was not here at the last meeting, and I did not get to wish everyone a happy holidays. So I hope belatedly that everyone did have a happy holidays. And you all look very tired, so that's all I'm going to say.
Ms. Mack?
I would like to thank Dr. Williams and his staff for implementing the gift of time process. Yesterday, I worked in an elementary school. In the morning, I stuffed envelopes. And in the afternoon, I ripped apart the open court books so that when students return, it will be easier for them to pull out the stories that support the phonemic learning that they had for the day. I am glad to hear, I think Dr. Hager mentioned it, and I brought it up, and I think you did too, Ms. Hen, that we're looking at allowing parents to come back to the schools. Because what I did, I think, some of what I did could be done by a parent. I enjoyed it. I look forward to my next two visits. And again, I thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. McMillian?
I understand that previous agenda items have been received and recorded. But I'd just like to mention again about the opportunity to take our meetings out to other buildings, possibly in the springtime when the numbers go down, hopefully. I just want to keep that on the burner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure.
Agenda items?
Yes, not agenda items, but just comments. I'd like to say that I held my third monthly SMOP Town Hall on January 6, and it was really incredible. We had a very engaging conversation with Dr. McComas and Ms. Shay about our curriculum and highlighting diversity, including a more relevant perspective and devising ideas to create greater student participation in creating curricula. So it was really great. And then on January 7, all SMOP applications were due. So I'm really looking forward to seeing the diverse pool of SMOP applicants and for the vote in March, when we vote for who the next person sitting in this seat will be. So thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you. Seating's throwing me off, sorry. Ms. Pasteur?
I want to thank all of the people who presented tonight. Just really great information. Dr. Williams, in your report, your, your budget, you included efficiency, blueprint, compass. You took care of how we sustain magnets. And I just want to thank all of you for your thoughtfulness, and especially coming back off of a break, that the, the work presented tonight was exemplary. Thank you. And Dr. Williams, thank you for including us with the testing process. And everyone, good night.
Thank you. Mr. Offerman? Dr. Hager?
I just want to thank the school system and all the folks in school buildings, again, for all your work and helping to keep the schools open. I think that's been incredibly important for our children. And I am looking forward to digging into this budget, Dr. Williams. And I think it's a great, a lot of great priorities, so looking forward to it.
Thank you. Mr. Kuhn?
Thank you. I just want to make a few comments. First of all, I want to highlight and talk a little bit about our seniors and the fact that college apps are out, for the most part. And I think folks are in wait-and-see. I'm excited for our student member to find out where he's going to decide to go. I'm sure that there's a lot of excitement going on there. At the same time, families are dealing with this pandemic. They also have college students that are about to head back, if they haven't already, to school. So there's families of all different sizes and, and lots of different situations. So I believe that this pandemic is spiking significantly now. I, I believe we need to continue to talk about it at our meetings so that everybody understands and we communicate clearly where we are. And I do want to thank Dr. Williams for focusing school by school so that we can keep as many students as we can engaged in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Causey?
I'll keep my comments brief, given the time. I was very grateful to be able to spend time at the TABCO ESPBC virtual meeting that was held on Saturday. And I just wanted to say directly to staff, everyone here that's working on behalf of our students every single day, you are so appreciated. Having a student in the system, I know how important it is trying to maintain that in-person instruction, the in-person athletics, the in-person extracurricular, those tutoring efforts, and also the other opportunities they have during the school day to make connections, not only with their peers, but with adults. So very important. In continuing forward, I look forward to the improvements of how we are providing PPE, also including parents as volunteers to help support everyone who's working so hard and maybe to be that one person that could make the difference of keeping a school open for children. Also look forward to any improvements we can make into the instruction for students on quarantine or isolating. And so I just would like to understand more about the attendance, how that is working with all of these new circumstances we have to deal with. And that will be all. So I'm looking forward to looking into the budget and seeing how we can continue to make progress for our students and our employees and our families and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda is announcements. The Board will hold its public hearing on the FY 2023 Operating Budget on Tuesday, January 18, 2022, at 6:30 PM. The meeting will be held virtually, and pre-registration will be required to sign up to speak. More information may be found on the Board's participation by the public website. The Board's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 25, 2022, at 6:30 PM. Thank you for joining us tonight. Be safe, and the meeting is now adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.